Good evening. I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education Special Meeting and Public Forum, with Finance Committee immediately following to order. A meeting of Tuesday, January 23rd. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. As I mentioned, the first part of the meeting is a public forum. On the Superintendent of Schools' Proposed 2024-2025 Budget.
I apologize for the delay. Thank you.
Ms. Daly, if you could read your script.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking Raise Hand or dialing *9 within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Okay. Go through our usual procedure that at some point our Vice President, Ms. Taylor, will raise a red card to indicate folks should start winding up their remarks. And when their time is over, she'll hold the red card up. And I just obviously, if people are on a call or on Zoom, they will not see that. So at some point, you may get interrupted when your time is up. First, I'll see if there's anybody in the boardroom who'd like to comment on the proposed budget. Seeing no race to the podium, is there anybody online?
There are attendees, but there are no hands raised. And there are no comments in the Q and A feature.
Without objection here, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion. I move to adjourn the public forum.
Motion's been made to adjourn the public forum, made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries. Seven zero zero. We are adjourned, but immediately going to end to start the committee hearing. Now pass the gavel over.
Jeremy has been present. He's been logged in, but he stepped away from the camera, so he was not part of the vote, but is he's in the meeting.
Before we begin, have we pulled him up on the screen? And does he have family credentials?
He does.
Good evening. I would like to call the Finance Committee meeting of Tuesday, January 23rd, 24th to order. So please stand up and pledge, and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next is Audience to Visitors. Ms. Daly, I recognize you again.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. For anyone, excuse me, if anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking Raise Hand or dialing *9 within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Is there anyone within the boardroom that wishes to be recognized, the Audience to Visitors? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Daly, is there any online that wishes to be recognized?
There are no hands raised. And there are no comments in the Q and A.
Without objection, we will end Audience to Visitors. Is there any objection? No objections, so ordered. Next is Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the discussion of the 24-25 Budget Proposal. Before we begin, I would like to recognize Dr. Hill to see if there's any comments he would like to make to the board, any follow-ups before we begin our deliberations. Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, or, excuse me, Finance Committee Chair. So I just want to say, so this evening, I will not read verbatim my letter. That's in here in the packet, but when you do give me the directions to begin to move forward through our process, as we have stated here in our agenda, I will give either my controls to Ms. Danielle Batsholder, so we don't have to go back and forth as Superintendent to her, so she will take over from that point, and I will chime in as needed, or if a question's asked most directly of me. And also, I wanted to make clear, you should all have copies of questions that were sent this evening by Mr. Panos. I believe they've all been answered, so at the appropriate time, if they're going to be brought up, I'd just like to know, or if you guys just wanted the answers, they're there for you to peruse.
So considering that they were submitted at 5:00 PM before we began deliberations, I would ask that as we go through the budget, if, as you go through each line, if you are able to just cross them off as you hit them, that would be most appropriate. And then at the end, if there's any heartburn about the remaining that have not been answered, I will take it up at that time.
Okay. Are you talking to Mr. Panos?
I'm talking to the whole committee.
Okay.
Any other Mr. Panos?
I just, you know, the board members can read them, you know, now or later, if they please, they don't have to follow this pattern, they can they can come, you know, what the administration is presenting.
Absolutely. I think, I think, I think we're in agreement with that.
Okay.
Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Okay, thank you. I will turn over to Ms. Batsholder. And we can just proceed, we can skip the introductory pages unless you feel very needed.
So what we've done in the past, since we have all of our administrators here, we've skipped the first few pages, so we can get right to the schools. Is that still sufficient by everybody?
Okay.
And I just want to answer question one from Mr. Panos's questions, because this, I don't believe is going to actually hit on any of these pages tonight, because it was from the presentation. So the $810,000 for menstrual products for, due to the state mandate, was it more of an FYI to the board of that is how much we would have to put in our budget if we were to fully fund this per Department of Public Health guidance. This is not a number that is currently in the budget. I did not add this in because it's so astronomical, and we're still trying to figure out how to go about this, and most districts are, so that $810,000 is not part of the 6.4%. It was more of information as, like, this is what Department of Public Health are telling us. There's no way we can afford this. So more a follow-on what we will do, but that dollar amount is unheard of.
Well, may I ask a question?
Mr. Panos?
Then, what is the legal status of this? Was it, the law was passed two years ago for, out for
And they extended it to July 2024, because so many districts were up in arms over it and the cost. But we are told that it's going into effect and that we need to figure it out. So right now, in order to just get all of the dispensers in every female bathroom from grades three through 12, all gender bathrooms, three to 12, and then one male bathroom, three to 12, in every building, it will cost us about $5,000 for just the dispensers, which is not that crazy of an amount for that. And then, based on our contract, if we go with the person, the company that does the dispensers, they will take even more off if we buy the product with them also. So we're still trying to talk through that with them to get, you know, the best price. We currently spend about $2,000 a year for menstrual products that are housed in the nurse's office at Clover and JFK, and then the majority of Sage and the high school.
So, yeah. All right. I mean, I guess this is a mystery here. I mean, this is a pretty high number. Anyway, maybe we can discuss this, since it doesn't, it affects this budget, though, in some way, right? It just says that if it goes through as, as it is now, it's going to be, it's going to add a 1% almost to the budget, right?
If we follow DPH's guidance to a T.
Do we have discretion?
That's what's unknown still.
This is not a small item.
Well, I we def, we have two senators and two state reps that represent the town of Windsor. And I think this is something that we really, really need to inform them, that this is a hardship, at least for our town. I understand they represent the whole state, but we just need to document as a board that this is something that we understand the importance of it, but it's an unfunded state mandate, and that's how we need to attack this. We don't want to attack it as we don't want to take care of our citizens. We have to look at it from a fiscal perspective, that we are being told to do something and have to make choices to cut something else. And quite frankly, that's unacceptable.
Mr. President, just to clarify, is that the only item that was in the PowerPoint that we had that's not included in the
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Question. Patterson? I have no idea what the process is, so if I talk out of turn at any point, just let me know. When you say we have discretion, how much?
What do you mean?
What if we just don't do it?
No, she said, we, we, we don't have discretion.
All right.
We don't know yet what to do. It's, these are, so because you are new, I'll just say, these are normal things that happen. Legislators vote. They pass a law. We have to follow the law. Sometimes they delay the implementation of the law because people complain. They know it's a hardship on folks. But normally, the law has to be enacted and it's going to happen. This is a year that is going to happen. The $810,000 is an estimate based on a count and some formula that's set up by folks outside of us. So we don't have discretion. We're going to have to meet the requirement. I will say on record, I doubt it's going to be $810,000, but it's going to be a number that we don't know. Because now we have to put stuff in places where we never had to before.
Yeah, and I get that. I just thought I heard you say it wasn't. That you said there was wiggle room in the law or something. No, it's
No.
Oh, okay.
Panel, Mr. Panos' ass was there, and she said, no one knows.
That's still not, that's still not an answer.
It's not, and that's how we get laws. I'm not being funny, that's how you get laws all the time from the state.
So then don't do it.
You can tell me not to. The board can vote on it. I'm going to do what the board says. If you say don't, we won't. And then we just wait for the the police.
Mr. Panos?
One more comment. I don't mean this too lightly. Don't we have several experts on this? That are sitting right here at the, that can all, can tell us the, the actual number? Times on I mean, not, don't ask me.
So, and that's why I asked our school nursing supervisor, Julie DeNegris, because she deals, this is something that she buys every year for Aidenly, Sage, and High School, and that's where I was trying to give you a little yeah, just an example of what we currently pay. Currently pay about $2,000 a year, so now that, once people find out it's free, will they still supply it to their children? I don't know. Would I as a parent? Yeah, I'm not looking for the school to supply stuff like that, but that's the unknown right now.
Yeah, so I'm cool with the unknown. I get there's no way to know that, but I just, we have to implement it. We just can't know what the number's going to be.
Exactly. Or like, how many times we have to refill them?
Yep.
What's the timeline of not having them filled? There's just a lot of gray areas still.
Yeah, and there's no mechanism for control at the point of delivery, right? If someone wants to go stock up on them, they can.
And that's the other, yeah.
Okay.
Let's get her.
Thank you. I have another question, because it's known that toxic shock syndrome occurs from tampons. Is the school going to be responsible if that happens to a student?
Okay.
No, the school wouldn't be, you know, responsible. Just like the companies aren't, right? Like, I know, I don't want us to go too deep into this. It's a projected number, but they're not. We're, we're told to provide a product, and liability lies with the company that produces the product, and people can pursue whatever avenue they choose to civilly for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We're putting question one to rest?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Settle.
I'm sorry, I'm used to going through my I would say, Mr. Chair of the committee, I'd say, because I remember last year, that's, that's just like a delay, just to go, for me to go, so for expeditions purpose, purposes, you know, to expedite this process, this Batsholder's going to do this, because I won't say nothing but Ms. Batsholder the whole night. Okay?
Fair enough. All creature of habit.
I understand.
Ms. Batsholder.
Okay, so now getting on to actual curriculum in school districts. So before we call up Oliver Ellsworth and Paquonic principals to review their pages, Dr. Haiti just wants to answer number three of Mr. Panos's question. And then we'll go right into Taryn and Jay, if you want to just come up, and we'll go right into you. Thank you.
All right, so, and this is also going to touch on other questions that have kind of similar pattern. So question three talks about some of the instructional strategies that we have in the narrative that we're going to focus on or keep focusing on. And a question says that, you know, we've been doing this and it has not been working, so why are we doing it? And we're talking about strategies such as MTSS, strategies such as a focus on tier two and tier one. These are research-based strategies. So, so two things for this question. First of all, they have not been working. I don't know what data is being looked at to determine that these strategies are not working. We have actually seen a increase. We would love more increase in our student performance, but we do, you know, we know that things don't change overnight. So we have, we just finished our second administration of our I-Ready assessment, and we are seeing an increase in student performance. So, you know, I beg to differ that, you know, our strategies for tier one and tier two are not working, and MTSS is not working, however, you know, not because a research-based strategy is not getting us where we need to be, means that the strategy is not effective. It means that we need to look at how we're implementing this strategy. It means that we need to look at the fidelity of implementation and how we're holding people accountable, and what systems we have in place to review and evaluate what we do on a daily basis. So when we say in our budget narrative that we're going to continue to focus on these strategies, or we're going to, you know, implement MTSS with fidelity, that means we are going, there's nothing new in education. So the most, the highest performing districts in the world are doing what we know and what we're trying to do. So there's nothing new that we're going to stop doing tier one and tier two and implement something else. It's just how we implement it, how we train our teachers, how we hold everyone in the school system accountable for executing these strategies at a high level. So that's the answer for question three and similar questions such as question six under the high school, and we'll, we'll come back to it, but that is the, some of the same questions about why are we doing some of the strategies that we're already doing?
Right. This isn't new. I mean, this goes back several years, so it
And it's not. So MTSS, for example, that's a multi-tiered system of support. So basically, that just tells you, you need to look at the different interventions and the different systems that you have in place to catch kids who are not performing at the level that you want them to perform. So there's, this is really, this is a research-based idea that makes sure that school systems have a system in place to catch kids who are not progressing at an average or normal rate. So there is nothing different. So when we say continue to do MTSS or make sure that MTSS is done with fidelity, we just say, we're just saying that we're going to make sure that actually every staff member who's involved in the MTSS process is doing the MTSS process with fidelity. So for example, an interventionist at the classroom level, we are training our interventionists to work with different programs. If one intervention is not working with a kid, that doesn't mean that the intervention is bad. It just means that we need to look at a different intervention to implement with that child. So this is what it means when we are saying, you know, establish clear benchmarks for MTSS.
Okay, I mean, I would have thought that if an intervention didn't work, that it, that means it didn't work.
But it might not work for NOHA, but it might work for PAA, like, it's, it's, so that's why, so we're going to make sure that we have a toolkit of interventions, and we're training our interventionists so that they know if something is not working for you, to not just continue doing it, to choose something else.
I, I, I had the idea, though, that you would be able to figure out, that the teacher would be able to know, or that those who are involved in this would be able to distinguish when one intervention would be effective versus another, versus another.
Right, so that comes with training and experience. So that's what we're trying to do as our teachers, is train our interventionists and provide them with a toolkit of different intervention strategies that they can use if one is not working.
I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. So, so we all settled with question three.
Yeah.
So I'm going to mark that as answered. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On, for question six that Mr. Panos had, it says on page five, under Windsor High School, under 24-25 school year, the second bullet, the monitoring and respond to emerging academic equity disparities in student subgroups. Is that on, is that correct on page five, or was it supposed to be page eight?
Maybe it's eight. I might have read that wrong.
Yeah, I just want to see where we got that one, because I didn't read that.
That eight is high school. I thought I was
Word for word for what he said.
Yeah.
It is page eight.
It's page eight?
Right, that is correct. It should be eight. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, we're going to get back on task here.
Okay, so Taryn Gruber and Jay Mahalco, our principals of Oliver Ellsworth and Paquonic, are going to give a quick overview of their site, and then answer questions you may have.
So Taryn Gruber, principal of Oliver Ellsworth School. It's great to be here, distinguished board, fellow administrators, community. I'm going to start us off with our highlights for 23-24 so far. And I will want to touch on question number three, if that's okay. Go back to that a little bit. So for example, we have, we're, like you said, Mr. Panos, we're enhancing instructional practices, focusing on deep engagement and actionable feedback. Actional feedback is more Paquonic and student discourse at OE. So I would beg to differ a little bit on your question number three for OE and Paquonic. We were actually celebrated for having our best year in seven years academically, last year. I set my goal at 70%, and sometimes I don't meet my goal. Last year, I pretty much did. It was about 69 in math and a little bit higher in reading. So we did have a successful year working on instructional practices. A refinement is, what we're working on at OE is the student discourse, and we're finding that students are talking about their work, they're on task. But a refinement is, how could we make it more purposeful? So the teacher designing tasks where the students have to learn from each other, have to talk in a sophisticated way. So we did well last year with these refinements. I think we're going to do better. I've looked at some of the preliminary data. We're not totally done. It's done, we wrap up I-Ready Friday, my birthday, in case anyone wants to send something to me. But I'll get that data, and I think it's going to be a birthday present to me and the school, because I think we're going to do very well as a mid-year check-in.
Yeah, if I add to that, we, for the deep engagement for Paquonic and actual feedback, we've really also been focusing in on students tracking their own progress, so they know where they are, where they're going, they take pride in the work that they do. And also really utilizing math strategies, so picking up that, that grit to continue when the going gets tough, and have a slew of strategies they can choose from, and, and just watching the qualitative data from the I-Ready, seeing the students, they're working harder than they've ever worked. They were able to state what strategies they were able to use when they were stuck, and there were problems that they had never even been exposed to, and yet they were able to use strategies to solve them. As of now, our second grade for reading is 10 percentage points higher than they were last fall at this point. So we are seeing that needle moving forward. Another spotlight that we want to talk about is expanding community partnerships. So Paquonic has been working with Windsor High School for many opportunities, one of them being tutoring for our students, which often we don't allow running in the hallways, but when the high school students come in and they run to go meet them in the cafeteria, it's hard to, to stop that. They really feel near and dear to them and are inspired. There's also been a real focus on STEM academics during that time, so the problem-solving, science, technology. Windsor Police Department, they've also supported us with our attendance focus. We had cookies with a cop last Friday for students who were improving on their attendance. We worked with the National Guard, and also recently, a member of the board coming in and sharing their story and experience with the students. So every opportunity we have to not only be a great school within, but leveraging all the support from the community abroad.
A third highlight for 23-24, implementing, which is a continuation, implementing SEL strategies and colleague PD, so it's colleagues giving PD to one another. I'll give a wonderful example. This last half day, I collaborated with two, two staff members. One was a brand-new psychologist that I just hired, and one was a more veteran staff. The PD was partially on SEL in terms of being inclusive, strategies to make everyone feel welcome, including the community. And then the second half was the discourse that I just mentioned.
And we've also had presentations that were done through the staff at our school, but also going to the district as a whole. Our most recent freshman development across the entire district. One of my teachers, Monique Scott, who'll be very embarrassed that I mentioned her name, but I did, is she did one on a common corner, and it was something that was also very useful. is she did one on a common corner, and it was something that was also very useful across, you know, grade levels, and she did a superb job with that. She'd actually done a professional development on it last year, and the growth between last year and this year is phenomenal. And you really see it being used in her class and throughout. We've also really focused on the DESSA mini. Shout out to Mr. Batchelder over there, our SEL specialist. He's done a great job working with the team and leading the, the charge in terms of using that data for SEL to inform when we're checking in with students, which students are doing lunch bunch. So really being intentional with using the, the data to drive our decisions.
And just, you know, it stems district down. So I was at a different school this morning, but I heard that I had a visitor, Dr. Haiti and others, telling a couple of my teachers that were selected as high-performing teachers that they would be assisting in our February Hall School PD. So all around, it's just wonderful to see colleagues giving PD to one another and students teaching one another.
For the major work for twenty-four, twenty-five, one of the things that we wanna highlight is our enhanced STEM instructional practices. These have included expanding upon labs across the different grade levels. Recently, just had a push-and-pull lab for kindergarten, a sound lab for first grade. And we're leveraging our partnerships with Northwest Park and Children's Museum to not just be like a one-off visit, but to have it be incorporated into the curriculum that we have. And as I mentioned before, looking at how we're using our tutoring not just as mentors and as inspiration, but moving the needle forward on our curriculum with our STEM focus.
Yeah. Which was mentioned a little bit ago, but also refining MTSS practices in SEL and academics. And again, we have seen success, especially on the academic side with MTSS. So for example, I'm looking at our data now, we have very, very few kids in what we call the red, which is, you know, the highest level of intervention. However, we want to do even better, and especially on the SEL side. We're looking at better ways to monitor our progress. You know, we still do have too many support calls at Oliver Ellsworth. So we have many pockets within that MTSS system that are working really well. And we're just kinda honing in on some pieces that we wanna improve on. So it's not that it's not working, but we still have work to do, and we wanna keep refining, keep getting better.
Yeah, and to clear identify some next steps with that, what that means for Paquonic is we've been using the Mini DESSA, which is a short, like, seven, eight questions that a teacher's answer. We're looking at using the full DESSA, which is more of, almost like, similar to a behavior rating scale, if you've ever done one of those. And it helps you hone in in terms of more specifics, in terms of what the students' needs would be, and then provides ideas in terms of what are some specific interventions in incorporating that more into our MTSS process. Recently, we also discussed with UConn, who is there for our culture and climate support. One of their staff is an expert in DESSA as well. So utilizing both our expertise within the building and other perspectives on that, and really connecting MTSS with special education. They've been operating in a silo. You know, essentially, MTSS is provided by interventionists and supports. And then if that is not working after a certain amount of time, they then receive special education services. We're working with Karen and Mary around how can we overlap that more often than having them be two separate interventions?
Yeah, one thing that we did with that is our coaches, our math and reading coach, haven't in the past worked as much with our special education staff, and they are meeting regularly this year to start that overlap.
And then the last thing that we really wanna highlight for the major work is along the same strand as refining special education, Sebastian, sorry. Easy for me to say. Let me try that again. Refining special education supports and program, including the ABA program. And so really for Paquonic, what that means is the introduction of an ABA classroom. ABA is essentially discrete trial. It's highly effective with students who are on a spectrum with autism. The earlier the intervention, the better. And it works on discrete skills until you accomplish what is the goal, whether it's academic, social, you know, whatever it is that you're working on. Prior to this, there's been one at OE and not one at Paquonic. But with population needs, if we're able to have an ABA in both, then we're gonna be able to serve the students within our own buildings, so they don't have to move to another building in order to receive those supports.
Probably stealing some of Mary's presentation, which she does hers, but she did hire an outside consultant to make sure that we're headed in the right direction and give us some, some pointers. So we're headed in a good place. Questions?
Four members?
The consultant, yeah, excuse me, okay. The consultant, where is that? Is that in your budget, or where the consultant?
It would be under PSES. It would be under Mary's budget.
It's in the sped, oh, right, sped budget, okay.
It's a little teasy. Sorry.
All right.
Any other questions, Panos?
No, I don't think so.
Any questions for the board? Mr. Halleck, you online as well, if there are any questions, sir? I recognize Mr. Halleck saying none. Any for the board here? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you for not going line by line. Everybody do that. This is great. Just a couple of call-outs that I will always call out is the staff implementing equity and SEL strategies, professional development. And just kudos across, because honestly, this is the, you know, both of your schools are, are the, the platform for which our students will understand future-forward at all the other schools to continue that these are the expectations, as well as our parents to continue those expectations. I love the fact that when things are kind of, you know, we, we oftentimes pause to, to give correction, and if something isn't going right. But what I do hear, the undertone, is you are cheering on your team, your educators in the building, all staff, all students. We're gonna, we're gonna get it right. And when we don't get it right, to just pause, reflect, but we're not gonna dwell on it. We're gonna continue to, to go forward. I thought I didn't have a question, but I do. The students that you mentioned from the high school that are coming to, to volunteer, amazing. Love that. Great help. Where are we getting the students from? What classes are we aware of where those students are, are coming from?
Oh, I, I know Mrs. Canoni has a connection at, at the high school, because her daughter teaches there. So she does help to recruit certain students to come. But it, we reach out to guidance counselors, we also provide the transportation.
Great.
Whereas before, there was, it had to be students who provide their own transportation. But thank you to Jen Hosine and the bus company. We were able to have transportation provided from the high school to Paquonic, and then they do ride the bus with the students back to their house. So I think sometimes that might deter them from becoming teachers when they see them on the bus.
I love that. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Ms. Tatum?
Thank you, thank you. Excuse me. Does that count towards the high school students' volunteer work?
Yes, it does.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fury?
More of a comment. It's, I guess it's part of my prejudice with my wife formerly being an elementary school teacher, a young elementary school teacher. But it's great to see what's going on at both of those schools. When you walk in those schools, you can see the excitement, the interest of students to be there. And one of the goals is to get students to come in every day in class, 'cause if they're in front of a teacher as much as possible, knock on wood with health issues, obviously. And it's great to see that kind of excitement. And also for, personally, through many friends of mine who have, have students at, at those levels. So it's direct feedback I'm getting from parents. And to me, you know, it's, the two biggest pillars right now is the health of our kids, physical health, mental health. And then they're able to hopefully do their best and be their best. And the importance, too, of keeping all our staff healthy. It is very hard. We know what all the schools are going through to get building subs, to have people not having to cover and figure out what's going on. So I appreciate both of you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comment?
It's the front pages. Mr. Madison?
Just, we're commenting. Thank you for the focus on STEM. I tell my kids all the time, math makes money. You're gonna be eighteen-something, and I'm throwing you out of the house. And math makes money, kids, so I appreciate the STEM focus.
I have to film you saying that. We can play for that.
All right, go ahead. My kids will tell you that all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Madison.
Thank you, everybody.
Wait a minute, no, wait a minute.
Never mind.
One more, sorry. So I always ask this every year, just wanna make sure that it's on the record that I ask this every year. One is, one thing that disturbs me is when I hear that the teachers say there's not enough money in their budgets to provide for their classrooms, and they have to fundraise. That's totally something I just despise. I just wanna make sure for the record that you have asked for enough money in this budget to provide all your classroom teachers for the supplies that they need to, to get the, for them to open up the school year and to supplement them through the rest of the school year. Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think especially if we're able to keep those positions that were previously funded by grant money, which you have asked the board to do, so that would be wonderful.
Right, that's, that's great. And number two, staffing. Do you feel you're fully staffed? Like, when you have absence, or you have to pull for coverages and support to being pulled, or stuff to cover your classrooms, are you feeling comfortable with your staffing levels?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I asked the question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Batchelder. I almost called your name.
Thank you. So if our three-five principals could come on up, Mr. Dana Gagne and Ms. Tricia Lee Clover, or, excuse me, Clover and JFK principals.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tricia Lee, principal of Clover Street School.
Good evening. I'm Dana Gagne, principal of John F. Kennedy.
One thing that I will say is that Mr. Gagne and I talk each week. Every Monday, we start our week off making sure that we're collaborating with each other, that our schools are pretty much on the same page. So working together to create this slide was pretty easy for us. Spotlights and accomplishments for our schools. Our dedicated SEL instruction and alignment to the expectations specific to our schools and vocabulary to support students' time on task, class time, cheeks in the seat, sitting down, making sure that they're learning, has been extremely important for both of us as these children transition from Paquonic and OE, making sure that they own their learning. And our SEL specialist has been amazing with working with our students, whole group and small group.
Right. Focusing on small group instruction, including push-in and pulled-out tiered support. So that is included in all aspects, whether it's SEL, doing small groups with them, all of our tiered instruction, having our tutors, our paraprofessionals, and our special education teachers pushing into those general classroom, general classrooms, so that they can support the students, so that they're not missing valuable instruction. Has been going really well.
And increased outcomes and teacher efficacy through data talks in our PLC meetings. Every Tuesday, we meet, and our teachers are diving deep into student data to make sure that we're meeting our students where they are and pushing them to where they need to be. So we're not just taking an assessment and using that data to teach them for six, seven, eight, nine weeks. We're looking at data every single week. And then our data talks, where our each content area is even looking deeper into the data to make sure that we're pulling our groups, our kids are getting the instruction where they need to be, so that they can push them even harder and further.
For major work for twenty-four, twenty-five, one thing we really wanna focus on is evaluating and analyzing our humanities curriculum based on the updated literacy initiatives, making sure we're focusing on things such as equity and making sure that our curriculum is set up to support all of our students.
And right along with that, we've heard this question number three. MTSS process timelines and tiered instruction. We have to remember, we teach children, not systems. So children change each and every year. So we have to make sure that what we do through this MTSS process meets the children where they are, not just teaching curriculum. We teach children.
Question? All set? All right. Ms. Panos?
The small group instructions, how long per day do you have this? Do they receive this pedagogical?
So teachers should be running small groups every day in the classroom. So if it's a STEM teacher, they should be doing it in their math instruction for roughly twenty minutes a day. But also, students are getting small group instruction based on what reports they're, they're receiving. So if a student is receiving, say, tier-three pull-out support, they should also, they'll also be getting small group instruction with the teacher in the classroom. So there's multiple levels of the small group.
And that also includes students who are accelerated. So small group isn't just for support. There are students who are exceeding our expectations. So they are also receiving small group instruction to continue to push them further beyond the benchmarks.
So it's twenty minutes a day total? Is that, was it, or?
Well, there's a block of time. There is a ninety-minute block of time. So within that block of time, there's a, a mini lesson that the teacher does. Then there's independent work that the teacher does, that the students are needing to do. And then, within that forty-five-minute block, teacher will pull two or three or four groups for a ten-to-fifteen-minute block of time. There also might be an interventionist who pulls in, who also pulls another group. So it's not just twenty minutes, one group, and that's it. A teacher could potentially see four groups in her STEM content area.
And Mr. Panos, at the three-five level, we have partner teachers. So for instance, one teacher teaches the STEM curriculum, and the other teacher, teacher is teaching the humanities. So the STEM will, will do the small groups, and so will the humanities teacher. So they're getting it in both of those.
Right, okay.
All set, Ms. Panos?
Yeah. At the bottom, it's talking about providing comprehensive resources and workshops for parents. You didn't elaborate on that. You see that at the bottom? The twenty-four, twenty-five school year work?
That's.
Is that, am I reading this correctly?
That's on our slide?
Excuse me?
That's not our slide? It is? Oh, in the narrative, okay. So when we talk about our parents, our PTO is very active at Clover. We also have done a coffee and tea with Mrs. Lee, where parents have had an opportunity to come in and have, talk about things that may have come up, like SEL, how we're gonna support our students through some of the transitions into third grade. Our FRC, working with our FRC and our SEL specialist, providing our newsletter to our families, and the opportunities that they see within district, or that if there's workshops that they would like to see in the building, our PTO is more than willing to support and work with families to do that.
Okay, you, you have any idea how many parents normally, what percent, or approximately how many in your buildings, you know, of the parents or the families respond to this, or take advantage, I should say?
We did have our, a PTO meeting on Monday evening. Mr. Madison, you were there. We had about nine families in the building, but about forty online.
Right. The PTO, right, the, this, yeah, I would assume that PTO is a, is a primary connection to this, because.
It is.
Yeah. But, so it, it does talk about, you know, providing resources and workshops for parents. So, you know, to enable them to comprehend and reinforce SEL at home. And I assume you do that.
Each of us, we do a STEM night, we do a literacy night, and our SEL is infused into those evenings. We've had the Windsor Public Library also with both of those nights. So there are resources that come to the school that are available for the families. Meals on Wheels have been there, the food bank during all of those evenings that we've had are open to the families.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just wondering, how many minutes per day do students, um, use your computer for instruction versus writing and lecturing?
We don't put a time on it. Um, we have had a new initiative this year for paper and pen. So we have very little time on our computers, on our, um, devices.
Great.
This week, we have been using our Chromebooks for iReady testing. But other than that, it's, um, paper, pencil, pen, notebooks.
I think you're gonna find that's far more successful because that has been documented in the Pediatric American Journal. I and I discussed that with Dr. Hattie and Dr. Hill previously. So I think you're gonna find a lot more success with that instead of kids just hitting, hitting the enter keys. They'll learn more, it will really move them along faster. Thank you.
Mr. Madison?
Uh, quick question. The, the K one and two principals pointed out, uh, programs specific to STEM. I know that's a general academic concept, but there are things specifically worth calling out. What are things to keep that momentum going through three, four, and five? Are there specific programs around STEM that you do similar to what K through two does?
We had, um, Explode the Code. We, um, our STEM, um, field trips, SOAR. What we do in the classrooms each and every day is exciting between the experiments, the technology.
We also have, um, project-based learning, um, which is one of our specials that meets on a bi-weekly basis. Um, and it focuses on long-term projects that are, um, STEM-focused.
Very good, thank you. I see your hand, just scanning. Back to you, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that you have excellent STEM programs because I know my child went through that and it was fabulous and he learned so much more. So thank you, they're great.
And if any, would you like to come out to the STEM literacy night, February first?
February first? Anybody else? All right, same question. Um, you've asked for enough money for your teachers so that they don't have to ask at the beginning of the year as if we don't provide for them for their classrooms?
Yes.
Have you asked for it? So I'm hearing yes. And staffing, um, how, how do you feel as far as, you know, when there's absences? You gotta cover with specials, um, building subs? What is, what is your feeling on that? You need more bodies or you're just, you're comfortable where you are?
Since you did ask, um, Mr. Lockhart about feelings, I feel it's important that each of our schools have our own dedicated full-time art teacher and full-time dedicated music teacher. Right now, we each share, so our art teacher is split between two schools and our music teacher as well.
Dedicated art and music. Both JFK and?
All of our elementary schools.
It's Clover, JFK, and Paquonic.
Okay, so all of them should have their own.
Yes.
What is the ask? Okay. I'm gonna put all elementary schools.
We appreciate you.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
A pound of twenties would be nice.
I was thinking grants, but that's okay, I'll give you Jefferson. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have another question.
I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Thank you.
I thought we were done.
Thank you. Are you sure you have enough equipment in your, I guess it would be your auditorium for seating? For when they come in? I think that's for JFK. I thought you could have used a little bit more when I was there. I'm sorry, not trying to put you on the spot, but I thought...
No, we have the seating, it's, we have to, um, the space for the, the seating is, is the issue.
Actually, we don't at Clover. And actually, Ms. Bachelder, if you don't mind me, I did ask. Um, last year was my first year at Clover and we had five fifth-grade classrooms. Um, so there were families that were standing. Um, this year, we have six fifth-grade classrooms. So I did ask if our promotion could be off-site. Um, because we don't have enough space, nor do we have, uh, enough seating. We did bring in seats. Um, the fun thing about Clover is we finally have our ramp working. So we did have a lot of grandparents that had to kind of walk around and go outside in order to come in side because the ramp wasn't working. We did have a few wheelchairs. Um, but this year, at least the ramp is working. Um, but we don't have enough space for five, uh, four hundred and six, um, fifth graders to be promoted at Clover.
Right. And to know for all of us. I believe we are now done. Mr. Hallack, any questions? Okay, I acknowledge that you have none. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bachelder?
Okay, next up, Leanna Jorgensen, Sage Park Middle School. Woo-hoo! Lonely up here. It's all good.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leanna Jorgensen, principal at Sage Park Middle School. All right, let me just get myself situated. Um, so tonight I'm gonna share with you some of the accomplishments, um, that were, that I'm proud of. Um, some that have allowed us to take a look at instruction differently and then also, um, work with our kids and help us to, to support our students. So one of the first things I'm really proud of is the fact that we had a ninety-five completion rate on our DESA. And so DESA is a universal, um, screener for social emotional skills. And so based on, on that, we were able to create small groups and supports for students, um, in our building and working with them so that they can then in turn apply those skills and strategies in the real world, in our building. Um, also the introduction to building thinking classrooms. So this is different and I know Mr. Panos might say, well, what's different? Well, now we put the Chromebook down and kids are standing up in classrooms. They're working on non-vertical surfaces, on whiteboards. And it's different, right, for the middle school level? Because we have a lot of big bodies walking around a room and you usually want a middle schooler to sit down. But if you walk into some of our math classrooms, because we've been introduced to it this school year, you will see our kids in groups, standing at boards, working together, collaborating, just, um, doing discourse. The teacher then easily walks around the classroom, listens in on conversation, provides feedback, actionable feedback right there and then. And so, um, we're liking the feel for it. It's a little different for a lot of our, our math teachers, but, but we're gonna stay the course because we're, we're seeing some successes. Uh, this year, we started to go back, um, putting our Chromebooks down, as Mrs. Cantor mentioned. And our kids are doing more hands-on learning and science. Um, we had a program, which is amazing, where you can actually do your science experiments online and you can manipulate the objects. But nothing beats having your pipettes in your hand, um, and working on that. And so we have gone back to that, um, throughout our classes. In some, it's a lot easier than others, but we're definitely working towards a hundred percent. And then, of course, our data talks and our PLCs that we're having to promote teacher efficacy, making sure that, you know, when teachers are working, they're working intentionally. They can actually see themselves, uh, making changes in student outcomes. And with that, um, then they want to work harder because that's, 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 that is its own high, so to speak. And then, and creating levels of student agency where students, um, where they have voices and choice. Uh, and then they're working on stuff that's interesting and relevant. So there's a lot of work to do at Sage Park and, and all of it is not captured in my, my narrative. So I'm just gonna, I'm putting it out there. So we're still working on curriculum audits and revisions for CTE. It was there for, I think, twenty-twenty-two in the narrative. But then the state came, said that they're coming out with one. And so we said, oh, wait a minute, let's see what the state has so that we don't create, um, and try to fashion curriculum. And then we have to double, go backwards. Our goal is so that we can align ourselves with the high school. Definitely, we're having our kids starting to select their CTE courses so that they can be on a, a, a pathway that is meaningful to them. Um, working along with PSCS, we're gonna be looking at our specialized programming, um, and making sure that we are appropriately meeting our kids' needs and providing FAPE across the board. And also continuing to work on building thinking classrooms. We like what we're seeing so far. We have purchased books for our teachers, they are practicing it. And so now we're gonna solidify, um, those skills and so that they become automatic. And then always, 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 I'm at a middle school. And so I would be lost if I didn't say continuing to work on programming and taking a, taking a look at everything that we do to help enhance school culture, climate, and build our students' those SEL skills. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. I'll start.
Do you briefly elaborate on that methodology using in the math class? And then is that based on some well-known framework or is that something somebody created internally?
No, it's, um, so I haven't read the book yet. So it's, it's new to me as well. Building Thinking Classroom is a book out there and I forgot the guy's name. I know Bonnie can probably yell it out, or Megan. Um, well, the idea is to get kids up thinking, um, critically thinking. And then there is specific ways in which to execute it within the classroom setting. I'm giving you the low-key level where they're standing up and working on non-vertical services. But there are ways to ask kids questions. There are also ways, um, there are also different types of questions that you can ask kids. Everything is not necessarily around curriculum. You can ask kids questions about real world where they are, are doing productive struggle with the, uh, with math. And so things that they may have never seen or things that could be a little bit out of their grasp just to see them be able and how they would go about tackling it. So I, um, I'm not doing it justice for what I've seen.
No, it's okay, it's a good point. I, I can look up the book. So I get what you're saying in terms of the methodology. How did that get introduced? Was that something your idea or is that?
No, the, the high school, um, I think they did some PD on it. Where's Megan's face, I couldn't see, yes. So the high school, uh, we work very closely with the high school. So the high school did some PD on it. I think there was a teacher who, who did something for one of our courses, talked about it, started to implement it, started to see some gains. And of course, through communication with the high school, they said, hey, this is working. What do you guys think? We're like, all right, we're on board.
Yeah. And what year was that? Just a year or two ago, five years?
This is, this is this year for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I'm glad this is not the first time someone's mentioned or in their book, Hands-on Learning. Um, I think we, we're often, students need to figure out in the real world, what, what do you do? How does this concept in science or in math, how do we apply it? So, um, I know it's kind of become a buzz word or buzz phrase, but I, I think it's very important for students who might say, why do I need this trigonometry or, or math of some kind until you can show how it's applied and really used? So I appreciate that. Uh, I'm glad to hear about the, the CTE alignment being there, but a little bit of a pause waiting for what the state is doing, especially our interest in CTE across the board here and vocational opportunities. Um, and that whole area keeps evolving. It's just the way it is. And I'm glad to see still keeping an eye on that with alignment as well as what the state may be doing. Talked about introducing, I guess I didn't understand, introduce building thinking classroom? Can you? Yeah?
That was the, um, the math program or methodology that I was just explaining to Mr. Madison.
Okay.
Um, again, students working, and I'm not doing it justice, but students working on, so non-vertical platforms. Whiteboards. You'll see, um, students around the room working on, on the boards in the classroom and they're working on problems, some within their reach and grasp and some not. Um, making sure that kids are using discourse, collaboration, critical thinking skills to, to address and to answer or show, show the way in which they would tackle the problem.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm very impressed with that, if I may say, because I do math for a living, literally. I did math all day today. And, and I'm, this is what I do, I'm a data scientist, right? And so it, it's interesting because moving around makes you twenty percent, twenty percent smarter. You literally, if you can't figure something out, walk around. So if you're standing up, you actually think better when you're standing up. Um, you have to collaborate because everybody hits, hits their limit in mathematics. Nobody knows everything about math, including me, right? And so I, the fact that they, you ask people to collaborate and to show how you would approach it, just you're hitting a lot of the, the things that I totally agree with. I just didn't know it was a methodology. So I found the book on Amazon too, but it's very interesting.
You already found a book?
What's that?
I said, you already found a book?
Eh, I, I, I read everything. I'm looking forward to it. It's a good methodology.
And there is actually a research that backs it up. They did ten years of research before he came up with the book. And I can share the research methodology and papers with you.
Absolutely. And it aligns with the research I've done too. I mean, Harvard Business Review, Harvard published an article about twenty percent better thinking. You go right down the list of the mathematics and stuff, so yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed, I like it.
You know what? I, I just want to say I want, I like the energy in the room. I would like for people to speak when recognized, please.
Ah, sorry, sorry.
So there's no misunderstanding on who has the floor and we respect each other. But I do appreciate the energy. So that being said, Mr. Fury, were you done speaking?
I was, thank you.
All right, I will now recognize Mr. Panos.
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, following on that, Mr., I think this is Lily Adal, right? This fellow, this author, is a, some of this, um, building thinking classrooms. I happened to, I just, I Googled, I found this. It looks like, um, it looks like he has a series of, uh, of, um, like textbooks. Is that correct? Are we?
No.
And is that part, no, there's nothing? There are no materials that are being purchased for this? It's just?
They are not specific textbooks. Um, and if they, if they are, they do exist, I'm not aware of it. Currently, right now, what our teachers are doing, and, and I'm, the fancy words have escaped me at this point. And so let's say they're working on a particular subject and/or topic. They can choose, um, a skill based on the unit that they're on and they can have the kids work on it. They could also choose a real-world skills that have absolutely nothing to do with the unit that the kids are working on. However, they have to use critical thinking skills and collaborate with each other and then work together to solve it. Through some of those activities, students will, will struggle and they have to try to figure out and use a lot of their background knowledge and skills that they have, 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 um, have gained throughout their time at Windsor Public School to solve those problems. And so those, that's insightful for teachers to also see how kids go around navigating, solving these problems and working together. So, and there's, there's specific different types. Um, it escapes me right now, but it doesn't require a textbook. You can use what you have, what you currently have, to make this work, which we have been doing this school year.
Well, how does he communicate this BTC stuff to the, to the public? I mean, what, what is the, I mean, he, how, how do they? And, and how do they communicate it to the students? What, what, what is the medium? And maybe you can?
So it's just enough?
I, I saw a series of books, I don't know, that there were, there were for sale on, on this topic.
Madison, show Ms. Panos your book. It's just one book. So, uh, so I don't know of a series of books.
No, he has a book, yes, but the, the materials for it seem to be a series of, of books. So, you know, for different levels. So I, I didn't understand. So, well, okay, do they, does someone go to a workshop? How, how do you, how do you know what this, uh, building, you know, this thinking? Uh, you know, how, how does the teacher learn this new method?
All right. So for our building right now, our teachers all have purchased a book, the math teachers. And they are doing a book study around the book where they are collaborating and working together and learning about the methodology and talking, um, about how would that look in their classroom? What are some of the ways that they can implement this? And so that's what my teachers are currently doing. So when I say that we're, we're introducing it, it's based on the level of work that they've collaboratively done together, um, through PLCs. They're also, they've gone across the street to the high school and they've observed high school teachers implementing this so that they have exemplary models of what it could look like within their classroom. So we're working closely together, um, to make sure that, that we're just not, we're not wasting our kids' times, right? Because time is precious. So BTC is research-based. Um, it does and it can yield, um, results for our kids. And so working together collaboratively under the guidance of our coaches and then also, um, our department head, Megan Maines, has been really great with the coaches in my building. Working with them, then we can then implement it in a meaningful way to our kids.
So the cost of this is very low? It's just some book, one single book for each teacher?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All set, Mr. Panos? Recognizing, um, no. I'm sorry. Dr. Katie, you had a response?
Um, yeah, so maybe we can continue that conversation when the high school team comes up because we do have experts in the room that, um, please. Speak about it.
So we'll, so we'll put it in the parking lot.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Hallack?
Um, thank you. I just have a, a one question.
Yes, sir.
Under, under, uh, science teachers, I see over the last, last few budgets, we, we dropped from, from, uh, six to four, six, five, and now going down, down to four, a full-time staff of teachers. Um, do you feel, feel that that's inappropriate, a level for, 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 uh, staffing for, for, uh, science?
Recognizing?
Alright, so um, over the past couple of years, Sage Park has reorganized our schedule. Currently now, we have a quasi A-B schedule that our students are taking language arts and math every single day for approximately eighty-six minutes. And then they alternate um, A and B days, taking social studies on one day and science on the other. The staffing that we currently have, which is four, includes the two science teachers that are needed for seventh grade and the two science teachers that are needed for eighth grade. For whatever reason, science teachers for sixth grade fall underneath the grade six science instructional people.
And that's because um, based on certification, K through six are under elementary. So that's why it's a separate line item.
So when the initial change came through and we did have a um, an extra, not an extra, but a a science individual not necessarily tied, we we did put that position up and we tried to get a science coach. And we had not, and had not been successful. So yes, I think it's appropriate for the for the classes that we have and the amount of students that we need to service.
Mr. Halleck, does that answer your question, sir?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions? Mr. Halleck, any other questions from you, sir? Okay. Mr. Panels?
Yes, in that connection, could you comment on the language arts teacher going from ten to nine? And also, well, you need, apparently at the grade six, you need to go from eleven to twelve. You need to go add one there.
Ten to nine, yeah.
And you increased technology and people by point four.
So I can actually, so um, the point four in tech and people is not, is actually um, because of the new health curriculum that came through a few years back, that should have actually been that um, four point four the whole time, because that one particular teacher teaches health, which was always under tech and people, but also a PE course. So it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So it it's?
Can I address this, though? So I'm?
Dr. Hill?
I just want to be clear that we're not adding anyone, and we can move personnel around in a building the way we see fit. So no one's being added or anything. If you look at the count, it's it's the same account. But we we just, we can move people. So if we had, like, in an elementary school, if I decided, you know, one year on my team, we needed, you know, seven teachers at this grade, and we wanted to move one, a person from another grade in the building, so now that grade would be six, that grade would be seven. As long as we don't add an FTE, it's like, because these are, these are just personnel moves. So they're not financial questions. They're not financial hits at all. I just want to make sure we understand that, because now we're?
Sure, I understand.
We're kind of like getting into discussions, like curriculum discussions and personnel discussions. Those are not finance, budgetary discussions. Because there's no budget, budgetary issue.
Yeah, but, okay, but I just want to know why you need an extra teacher in the eleventh, in the sixth grade?
Where are we right now?
That's the need they decided that they had for their building at the time?
Yeah, I know why.
I have to do the math.
All grade six would be purely based on enrollment, just like we do at K through five.
So you have a higher enrollment, and you had a higher enrollment for for grade six?
Exactly. So next year she may go down to ten and then need to add, because now that cohort's going to seventh grade. And then she may need a science and math change.
Okay. All set, Mr. Panels? Man of Vice President?
Just uh, want to share. From year to year, you know how the graduation class changes? It might be seven, it might be three hundred and five one year, but then it drops to two hundred and eighty-three the next year? It depends on how many babies were born that year, depends on credits. It's class sizes, so every year, it it's different. I know class of twenty twenty-five, for whatever reason, is larger than twenty twenty, it was, larger than twenty twenty-four, but it's not by like thirty kids. It's, you know, it's really, it's in in the window there. And so when they're adjusting how many teachers they need, uh, it's by need of that class. Does that make sense?
Yep. Any other discussion for Sage Park? Mr. Madison?
I want to apologize to Mr. Fury for talking on his time and say I continue to love your tact and smoothness in telling me to shut up.
No, that's fair, but you only said you knew me with the rules, so gentle prating.
Appreciate it.
If it's been more abrasive for Mr. Panels, open.
Next, next, next time, tell 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 him next time he's going to get an Article fifteen. He'll know what that is.
That's right, I know what that is.
Thank you so much. All set? Are we all set? We're all set? Thank you very much.
Did you forget to ask me a question?
Okay, equity, yes.
I know. My baby is there.
No, okay, so I'm going to ask you three questions then. So number one, do you have enough money in your budgets to give your teachers what they need to start the year? And they don't have to be fundraising in the public for what they need. And and Dr. Hill will not be hearing your answer, so you can be very frank with us.
Oh, trust me, I'm never shy. Yes, I have enough money.
Do you have enough staff in your building?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
What are your wish lists?
My wish list?
You put something?
Okay, he, 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 tell him you need a million dollars. Go ahead, he, that'll make him happy.
A blank check, though. I I don't have a wish list, honestly.
So is there anything that you actually need that's not in this budget? That's all fair.
No, I think this is a fair budget. And inaccurate.
You seem disappointed, Mr. Halleck.
No, I'm disappointed myself because I didn't ask her. I apologize.
I just wanted to make sure I was asked. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I make a comment? Just, I know it's comical, but I want to make sure that people are clear. Because, you know, they, we start off the year with people saying it. So Windsor Public Schools funds very well, I'm going to keep saying that. And all staff have what they need for their classrooms. So I want to make sure there's a clear distinction with, between staff starting off school years with classroom supplies and things that are needed versus things that people want for themselves. I taught. Guess what? I went to the store and bought stuff that wasn't supplied, because they don't, you don't give teachers everything they're going to put in their room. There are things they buy on their own. So I don't want to start a a trend or get people under the idea, and we never require teachers, nor do they need to in order to do their job, crowdfund or fundraise at all. So I just want to like, really hit that hard, because we start off the year with people coming at us with that. None of our teachers need supplies to teach what they're licensed and paid to teach in Windsor Public Schools. Now, if they want extra things, that's on them. So we are not part of that crowd out there in other towns that people are, you know, raising funds and crying poor. That's not our district, so I don't, I don't like that image at all. And I don't like that commentary that people have out there. So I just want to make that real clear to the public. Teachers start off the year with what they need to teach our students, and the supplies are there. Because the board has given us the budget every year that allows us to do that. Some people have chosen to want to go out and raise funds or put out stories and storylines that are not accurate.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure during this process, we articulate that. So when we get to August, September, we can actually say we've asked the question, the question has been answered, and we are providing exactly what was asked in the budget. And if we did not feel happy as a board, then we add it to the budget or took away from the budget. Just want to make sure we're clear. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, in addition, I'd just say closed mouths don't get fed.
Ms. Batsholder?
Okay, Breon Parker, principal of Windsor High School. Do you want to call everyone? Yes, please. Absolutely. Whoever you feel you want to come, bring on up.
You are in control.
You want us to help?
Yeah.
What was that?
No, so I want them to? So, good evening. As mentioned, Breon Parker, principal of Windsor High School. And as um, I'll probably allude to a little bit in, you know, my my uh, description.
Can you slide the mic forward?
That's right, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you. Alright, so, good evening. Breon Parker, principal of Windsor High School. So, you know, as uh, as Ms. Jorgensen alluded to in her description, uh, Building Thinking Classrooms, I just felt it was appropriate that, you know, the the faculty that worked on that exclusively over the summer uh, came up and kind of talked about it a little bit. So um, I know for me, under under my leadership, that's one of those things that I'm always going to push is building that capacity for for leadership, um, not only with our administrators, but then also with our our teachers. So while Megan Maines oversaw the process and and kind of gave them the keys throughout the car, these are the people, Ms. Emily Lorenzett, Ms. Julie LaRue, who really went out, did the research, did the trainings, came back, brought it to our staff. So I wanted them to be able to kind of talk about uh, the process and kind of clarify what you heard earlier.
Well, do they want to ask questions or just?
You just talk about the program first?
Sure.
Okay, good evening. So I just want to reemphasize that the Building Thinking Classrooms in mathematics, grade six through twelve, is a celebration. It actually has nothing to do with the budget. It is something that we started um, last year. And if you, if you read his book, it's a very easy read. You don't have to be a math teacher to read it. But when you're reading it, there's a lot of ahas, like to the traditional teaching of math, where the teachers go up to the board, do an example. Kids have no like, background knowledge into this example, they copy it down. Who's thinking? The teacher's doing the thinking, the kids are modeling it, they're following a procedure. And then they're expected to, you know, keep repeating it over and over again on their homework, on the quiz, on the test, on the midterm. But again, who thought this all through was the teacher. So Building Thinking Classrooms is kind of, is taking a shift from the teacher doing the thinking to the student doing the thinking. And that's who we want to be doing the thinking, right? We already know how to do this. It's the students that need to grapple with it. Building Thinking Classrooms is a framework, not a curriculum. It's it's a set of strategies that teachers can implement um, in their classrooms to help deliver the content. And I am so proud of the work that the high school has been doing. You know, this is, I've been here for a long time. I think I've been in math leadership at the high school for maybe eleven years. And this is one of the things that, like, I will leave here being, not right now, but when I retire, let's say. Being like, this was one of my favorite things that I, that we brought to the high school. And this book kind of took the math world by storm, I would say, really, probably like two years ago. It came, I first learned about it at a Performance Matters Conference through the state in the fall of last year. And I'm like, this sounds kind of interesting. I like, like, I like it, I'm ordering the book. So I ordered the book, I read the book. Then every conference I went to, there were sessions on Building Thinking Classrooms, and schools were talking about how they were implementing it. And I went and visited schools and watched it. And I'm like, I want this to happen at Windsor High School. And I conveniently had some teachers who are doing their internship this year. And I'm like, here's a great project for you guys. Let's roll this out to high school, and while we're at it, let's do middle school too. So these two teachers tried it out last year, invited high school, the other high school teachers into their classrooms. And the, with their help, we've been rolling it out in parts, because you can't just tell teachers to do, to change their way of teaching and implement all fourteen strategies at once. So we have a whole rollout plan for this year. And um, in two weeks, February seventh, we're rolling out part three. And we were working on that before this meeting. So if you want to ask Julie or Emily any questions, um, please do, because we are really proud of this work. But again, it has, really has nothing to impact, no impact on the budget.
Ms. Taylor?
Everybody's talking about the book, so I had to go on Amazon. Pete, Peter?
Liliodal.
Liliodal. Yeah, okay. No, should I get the two-pack? They've got the K through twelve, and they've got the eight through?
The orange book is the one that all the sixth, um, sixth grade through twelfth grade teachers have. That's the book, that's his first book. That's the one that we use, that we reference.
So you wouldn't suggest getting the blue one they have here?
Is the blue one for non-math?
I don't, yeah.
Yep, so that book just arrived in my office last week, because we have been inviting other subject areas into our classrooms to see what this looks like, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of buzz around this, so.
Just go on ahead and get the two-pack?
Sure.
Be here tomorrow.
Yes, they are, they are really, they're set up.
That's going to go onto the board.
We should get a commission on this.
Yes, that's it.
It'll be here tomorrow, great. Okay, thank you so much. No, because I just want to make sure everybody's talking about, get the book. And I'm like, oh my gosh, I want to go get it, you know? And I do have a sixth grade kiddo, so this is on time. Thank you.
And it did, we did have to explain to students and explain to families, like, the shift, because students are used to just, you know, coming in, taking out their notes, copying it down. So kids are like, can we go back to the old way? And we're like, the old way where your teacher did all the thinking for you? Like, sorry.
Is it okay if I comment? The kids want this. One of the first things that um, the author says is kids want to think, they want to learn. We just need to give them the means to do that. And so what he did was he took the institutional norms that have existed forever in public schools and just flipped them all upside down. The only things he kept constant were, okay, we have to learn in classrooms, and we have to abide by the bell schedule. Everything else was up for grabs. And so he just flipped everything. And so exactly what Mr. Madison said about, when you're on your feet, your brain is functioning more effectively. So these kids are up, they're moving, you know, there's no more. And they need to be involved. And I have kids asking, when they come in and I don't do it, miss, why aren't we at the board? And get us at the board. So it's, it it hits all of those things that we want our students doing. And the other thing is, um, a big part of it is random grouping. So they come in, they spin a spinner. So there's no stress about, oh, I'm working with this person, you know, I'm not working with this person. It's different every day. So they're learning to talk to each other, and it's amazing. It really, really is. And I welcome, I invite you all to my classroom anytime. It's an open door.
Mr. Madison?
Did I have my hint up? Oh, you did, you did, you caught me. Um, a couple of things. I was getting ready to, I was waiting for someone else. No, this is fantastic stuff. So it's interesting you should mention random grouping too, because in 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 the technology world, we do something called pair programming. So a lot of times programmers used to sit at the desk all by themselves, and they found that that's not as effective as if you randomly pair people. And and you may say, why is only one person at the keyboard with the second person just watching? And the answer is, you have two brains at work, and they're learning the same thing and understanding the same thing. So random programming pairing is actually a thing in the technology space in addition to the mathematics. So another one, I didn't know that until fifteen seconds ago. I just sent an eight-page summary of the book to all you guys. So if you want to really just bail out on the cost, just read the eight-page summary. Does this, what's this person's background, the author? Is he, um, because what I'm impressed by is that it maps to the real world. Like, like, like I said, I do math for a living, and I do, I have done technology for twenty years before I became a data scientist recently. But it's like, these are real-world methodologies. And why I always say, the purpose of school is to prepare you for life, right? And I'm biased towards math, you may have figured that out. And so what's interesting is is that this is really practical mathematics. It's not just learn math, it's like, no, this is how we do math in the real world. Is his background professional, or is he a pure academic? Do you know?
I believe he's pure academic.
Interesting, okay. Just curious, and then last question. I love it, as you can tell. How do you measure success? Like, how do you know it's working? Is there any, and I know it's hard to get concrete measures in in human fields, right? But it's like, how do you know it's working? Or is it just like intuition, feedback, energy? Those are measures too, but how do we know?
That's awesome. You want to take that?
Even if you have to use references to other schools that have done it, if this has been around for five, ten years, whatever.
Right, um, to my knowledge, it hasn't been around for that long. But um, in the book, there's a whole chapter on the assessment and how students are doing. But you're not just assessing students on like, how well they're solving the problems. You can also assess the students on how well they're collaborating and how well they're persevering. So those rubrics are co-created with the teacher and the students about, you know, what does it look like to be a collaborator? What does it look like to persevere through problems? And the teacher and the students create that. So, that's one way that they are assessing the skills. To be, to be honest, that's part four of our rollout. For, I don't know when we'll be doing that, but that, the assessment in the classroom on these strategies is coming. But we anticipate making, having the students persevere and try problems that they would have just sat there and, like, pretended that they were doing at their desk if they weren't sure, but doing them at the board. We're teaching them how to tackle problems, how to problem solve, that we are anticipating that our scores would go up on standardized tests, because those SAT questions are hard, and you can't teach them how to do every single one of them step by step. But we're giving them, we're helping them build skills to attack problems that, again, we ultimately hope that their scores would go up, because they have the confidence, they have some strategies on how to handle those problems.
Very good, thank you.
All right, that directly scheduled program?
And, yeah, in science, do they, excuse me, yeah, I was just curious if it, if there's application in physics or chemistry for this method? Do you, have they shown up and shown an interest?
So, the other book that Ms. Taylor was talking about is how to use it in other classes besides math, but there definitely are, there's definitely a lot of math being done in our science classrooms that they could be implementing these. We just haven't gotten there yet. But, you know, Bonnie and I have talked about trying to implement some of this in our science classrooms at the high school. We're just not there yet.
But, but as yet, but as yet, if, well, it, you know, it doesn't apply to humanities yet, you know, is it like English class? I don't know, that'd be a stretch.
So, I think there are ways to apply it. I, like I said, that book just arrived on my desk last week, but I will be sharing it with other people, because the math department has gotten a lot of, like, hype around this, where students are talking about BTC, and other teachers are like, what is that? Like, the kids are talking about it, like, they never talk about what they do in math class before, and now they're coming in, and like, and teachers have said the kids are more willing to go to the boards and humanities classes to collaborate. So, when we, when I get a chance to look at that book, I'm hoping that we can spread some of these strategies building wide.
Dr. Hill?
So, I was going to say that, you know, it's, I always laugh in education, again, after 31 years, there's nothing new. I think Dr. Haiti started off saying that. So, and I'm glad everyone's interested, and I don't really care what title people need in order to get hooked, it works for me. But all of you, with the exception of a couple of folks over here, my nemesis, Mr. Willison, every single one of you went to school and you were doing this. It just didn't have a name. You were required to go to the board, you were required to do random problems, you were required to get put in groups. I don't know at what point, I can take a guess in my career, it happened pretty much mid to late 90s, we went really heavy on testing, and standardized testing across the country, and I was in Virginia at the time and came back. So, when I, and this person happened to be one of the people at one of my insert conferences too. So, it was just interesting that, you know, catchy name, and it's, it's a great thing, for sure, but you've, you've done this. And it's continued over the years, and mostly in our talented and gifted classes across the country. So, I think it's a great thing that all students are actually getting the opportunity to learn strategies and experience education, the way we had relegated for a couple of decades to just our top students. Because, you know, you look at it, and I was just taking a quick refresher, looking at the PDF, that's exactly how all of my classes started, right, from elementary school through high school. They were the same way every single day. And as they're describing it, and I'm glad to hear about the excitement of our students, particularly math, right? Because I'm always one saying, the reason why our students don't really go for math here, particularly in America, because we teach it in a vacuum. We just teach, you know, solve the problem. What am I solving it for? What is it connected to? Whereas other countries, when we look at the PISA test, it's an international test that compares our countries, and, you know, we sit pretty low, what do other countries do? They give students an actual real problem, like, they're solving a problem with their mathematical skills. So, this is great that our students are really taking to this, but I just want people to understand, if, if teachers talk less, as you said, you know, Megan, from the beginning, teachers working too hard. You know, you're just doing too much work. I don't know if you remember Joe Arquari's, when he was principal, that's something he would say all the time, you should not be working that hard. The kid should be the one leaving your room tired, because they should be doing more work. So, this is absolutely outstanding, but I just want people to note that, you did a lot of this when you went to school. You just didn't know it. You just were told, go to the board, or work with this group and solve the problem, you just did it. Now, we have a name for it.
Thank you, sir. Now, we are prepared to discuss Windsor High School.
Thank you. Breon Parker, again, Principal Windsor High School, and I have the stylistics with me. Actually, I brought the leadership team up, and I'm kind of full transparency, this is part of the growth as a group, and some of that, you know, kind of calibration that I like to do. So, normally, I sit here alone, this time I asked them to come up, and I may defer to some, to some of them for questions, but, you know, I'll really kind of get started. And first, I want to give kudos to my colleagues from the other grades, from the lower grades, and if nothing else, what this is, is kind of, I hope, is showing you all, is that, you know, budget aside, there's, there's an intentionality, I think, that we're all kind of coming to, that's coming to fruition for us, and just realizing that, you know, something starts here, and then it's all, it all ends at a certain place, right? And that's, that's the ultimate piece, which is graduation, and we all own a piece of that, from, from our, from our students, to our parents, to our educators, to the board. I think the fact that we can sit here and kind of talk about our work and celebrate our work, and be, you know, transparent about things we want to grow on, I think that's an opportunity for us to kind of, you know, build some sustainability. So, what I obviously, you know, we, we're here in Hartford County, we have tremendous, rich community and things in terms of, like, our music, our sports, athletic, things that we're known for, right? And we talk about that. I think anywhere in this county, you talk about that, they'll, they'll say Windsor High School's had it and has had longevity in those areas. Just a couple of things that I want to celebrate, that we've been kind of talking about at Windsor High School, in terms of our, our leadership and, you know, our other educators, and just some things that we were talking about from '23, '24, kind of where we are now, and kind of some, some hopes and, you know, visions that we have for, for next year. So, I'll start by talking about, and I just saw some of the, and the questions there, we introduced our student summits, and really, those are kind of extension of some of the SEL work that was done in our Student Support Center. And what we did with the student summits is now, it's an extension from, you know, maybe they could talk about things and connections, but now, we are really kind of focusing in on certain subgroups and things that are revealed in data, like referral data, or just maybe even, you know, just getting to know the students in those pieces, and really being intentional about pulling these groups together, and really having, having conversations. I can say in Dr. Mallory's leadership with the SEL group, and kind of working with him directly, he actually sits in those summits with myself. And, you know, kind of some of the things that emerged from that, some of those things that I'm very, very proud of, is that students, maybe that didn't, you know, feel as comfortable in opening up to folks, kind of really did talk about some things, and maybe reveal some things to us. Something as simple as the concept of, how do you study? So, we give people things like packets and say, hey, you know what, take this home, go study it, and have a quiz on this date. But did we really ever teach a student how to study? Or how to study without distraction, or how to study with distraction, or how to prioritize, or how to organize? And so, so those are some of the things that the students were able to kind of reveal to us and kind of start talking about, or kind of thinking about, once you leave high school developmentally, so am I thinking about that as a ninth grader? Am I thinking about that as a 10th grader? What does that look like as a 10th grader? It was two years away, as opposed to, you know what, a senior that may have just kind of, you know, may have not have gotten to where they wanted to be until start, start thinking about it now, with six months left. So, those were kind of emerging in those areas, those are things that I think we kind of forecasted, and I'd say, like, some of those first initial groups that we've done, really, really proud of the work that we've done in those areas. You heard a little bit with under Dr. Noah's leadership, Data Talks, those things, I can say that we've been trying to establish a data culture for, you know, since we've kind of stepped into my leadership. And I know Data Talks was one of those pieces where our teachers are able to sit down and kind of bring their data to the table, and sit there and talk with, about it with building leadership and with their colleagues. And I'll say, the most impactful piece for that is just that, is that discourse amongst colleagues. So, you're not sitting there necessarily in front of your evaluator, but you're really talking about the work, you're talking about the data. If it's positive data, if it's data that needs work, you're able to sit there and not feel evaluative in that sense, but then talk about what you have and what you hope to attain, and different strategies that you may come into play, usually come into play, and them just kind of actually feeding off each other with strategies that they may be using in different instances. So, I think just making that a regular schedule, and I think we're doing that across all of our schools, is becoming an expectation that I think people have actually started to look forward to and take advantage of. Building Thinking Classrooms, I think you've got a, you know, you've gotten a pretty detailed explanation of what that's about, and I think the biggest piece for that, when you go in and you watch students who normally are just seated, or even if they're not necessarily, you know, actively the ones speaking at the time, they're up and moving. And I think that piece that Ms. LaRue talked about, and just really kind of thinking about it from a physiological standpoint, is that the body's moving, the blood's moving, it's working towards the brain, and you're not expected to just sit there and kind of wait for an answer, or wait to be bored, or wait for something. You're actually up and moving, and to see them kind of have that discourse from time to time, it was just kind of like, we might be on to something, not only for, for math, but maybe we can extend those to other, to other subject areas. Another piece that we've been kind of focusing on is the Student-Athlete Success Plan, and at some point, our athletic director, Mr. Fulton, will be speaking more in detail about that, but really, what that boils down to in a simple sense is more academic monitoring, and really just that connection to parents and coaches, and really understanding, like, what, some of the, many of our students have aspirations of kind of going on to the next level and being student athletes in college. And, you know, some of us have had that experience, and we just felt like there was a, you know, a different direction, we can go in and pay a little more attention to certain things in terms of just study habits, things in terms of, like, their progress, having conversations with, meetings with those students. And again, just another opportunity to now, while we're focusing on the athletic piece, we've already started to look at some of our other entities, like our clubs and activities. So, all these students, we ask them to, to be really good, you know, students, but then we also ask them to be well-rounded. So, how are we monitoring that and supporting that? We brought back the WHS debate team, so really kind of proud of that. A couple of snacks along the way in terms of, you know, just making sure, it was something, wasn't something that was initially budgeted for, but that's something I, I know, and speaking with those students, they are really, really excited about the opportunity. And again, you know, when we start thinking about all the different things that we do well here in Windsor, and things that we're celebrated for, it's an opportunity for, for students that don't necessarily get, you know, get celebrated, to actually show their skills and things that they're, they're excited to do. And I think the debate team was one of them, just really sitting there, speaking with a couple of them, and just kind of, you know, the experience they've had so far. We were really just looking at this year as a kind of like a baseline year, kind of learn the rules, kind of visit a couple of schools. They've already started fundraising, and they've already taken a few, a few trips, and we're actually looking to the point where we want to be a whole school, like some of those other places. And again, it's, it's something else that these students want to be known for, and I, I feel like that's something I will keep pushing. Again, not athletics, but just where can all of our students have an opportunity to be great? Another thing I'm always excited about, and we had it again this year, our Director of Counseling, Ms. Dana Fudge, she actually coordinates our alumni panel that comes back and speaks to our students. And something over the years that, like, kind of the feedback we've gotten from students, like, we would bring people back, but they would say things like that, so, oh, we don't even know what they're talking about. So, you know, it's cool to bring people back that might have graduated from, from 2010, but we didn't do, I didn't, I don't think we extended it enough to where it was people that the kids actually may have been in the building with. And so, now, it's like, okay, this person, I, you know, when I was a freshman, they were here, and now they're doing that, and I can actually ask them questions, exchange information, and have those conversations, whereas opposed to, hey, it's nice hearing what your experience was in 2013, 2014, oh, but you were like, probably there with my mom, or something like that. So, this, this is just feedback from the students.
I hope not, I hope not.
Hey, hey.
2013?
Is she your grandmother?
Sir.
So, again, but, but the, but the biggest thing about, about watching, obviously, students that you've seen grow up, and, but it's them coming back to not only talk about all the things that are really, you know, great after graduation, but really talking about some, some real, you know, challenges that they've, that they've dealt with, and either in school or in the workforce and things like that, and students really feeling comfortable and asking authentic questions and getting real answers. So, with that said, some of the major work that we're looking at for, for next year, we've also started our NEAS cycle, and that's the New England Association for Schools and Colleges, that they're accreditation board, anywhere K through, through college. And so, they're coming, and Windsor High School's turn, and they've already come and done their first visit, all right? And so, nothing that we were really surprised about. I mean, we, we got a lot of kudos, I think, in terms of what they say we have for interventions, and just kind of, you know, the really, students being involved, like, all those different pieces, I think we got a lot of kudos for. But some areas of growth would be curriculum enhancements and development of a profile of a graduate. And I think we, we started talking about that, you know, maybe back in 2019, if I'm not mistaken. You know, at some point, COVID snuck in, and then, you know, we kind of never really continued that work as a district. So, I think this is a really cool opportunity for now, for us to really kind of get together, K through 12, and talk about what that graduate, what does that warrior look like at the end when they cross the stage at the Bushmole? And so, excuse, sorry, I would, hold on. Some of the other pieces that I know right off the top of my head, hold on, I just lost my. It just came on soon. No, I just, I'm sorry, your time, though, I just have my notes. I'm actually okay with silence, so. All right, I just kind of wanted to stay in, stay in sequence. So, talked about the profile of a graduate, and the opportunity that we have here now as a, as a district, to understand, like, from K through 12, what a warrior looks like. Another piece that, you know, we've been looking at for next year, I think, is a school, I'll call it for now, a school beautification program, and I'll say next year, we kind of get to the audit, the audit phase. And I'll say for me, where the, you know, kind of where the inspiration came from is, like, what we've, I've been doing these walkthroughs with the alumni that come back for their 50-year anniversaries, and I've probably done four or five of those at this point. And there's, there's just, they are so excited when they, when they come back, and, yeah, I feel like I'm actually a teacher again sometimes when they walk through, it's really busy, have to give out detentions and things like that. But no, they're excited to be back, and it's the kickoff to their Alumni Weekend and things like that, but, you know, along with some of the nostalgic pieces that they do mention, I think there's pieces that we can do better in terms of, like, having those things available that they're aware of. And so, you know, when they want to go and see things like the auditorium, they want to see, you know, the old spaces that they used to walk through, I just don't feel like we've represented that enough, or in, in a neat way, that people, that every class can come back and say, hey, I'm a piece of that. They give things to us, you know, they leave us gifts and things like that, and, you know, they always give us kudos for, you know, the school and just the different things, but I feel like that's an opportunity now for us to kind of, you know, take it to the next level. And I think probably a place to start would be our red tile lobby area where the auditorium and the, and the gymnasium there are, and then kind of go through the building and just really have a committee, and I'd actually say, I'm going to look for the students to kind of lead that, maybe through our student council and our student advisory groups, to kind of talk about different things they want to see. So, again, we'll be in the audit phase of that next year, but just something that's a vision that we would look to start next year. Another phase, another thing talked about was SEL focus. And again, we talked about, you know, some of those subgroups and things like that, so now, what does that look like as we, we move from group to group? Again, we're looking at data, and then hopefully, we're actually developing leaders as well. So, yes, some of that work is actually happening with the SEL specialists pushing, pushing into classrooms, we have student leaders that are in connections, but now, maybe some of those students that needed that support, and were struggling at one point, now they become leaders and kind of push on, and then kind of pushing towards more, you know, different subgroups. And we'll look to do some more of that work. Again, we talked about the Student Extra Success, Success Plan, and again, when we And again, when we talk about the Student-Athlete, now it's that transition into, you know, what is, how is that monitoring happening for someone that might be in the band or someone that might be, you know, in culinary? Just really kind of looking across all facets and making sure that our students aren't getting stuck. Because some of the things that you would think of, I'd say some of our our more kind of upper-tier students, some students that may do well, they sometimes they go through so much to try to get there. And I think a lot of times we we lose track of that because they've always kind of shown that trajectory. So how can we help them kind of get over the hump of, you know, I have the, I'm taking all these courses, you know, these advanced courses, but at the same time, I'm traveling to this place, this place, this place. And how are we monitoring, how we're supporting those students in that work? Because a lot of times they're so proud, they won't say anything. But how are we kind of looking at it from a from an adult lens of how do we support them? Something that's come out of our student advisory committees and those that don't know what those are, those are the committees where the students sit down with our superintendent and the principals in each building and really just kind of address concerns, maybe talk about things that are going well, but then they would also bring things to the table. I know one thing for for myself and under my leadership, there will always be, you know, opportunity for the student voice. And in that case, they brought that, you know, brought things to to the table. And then we said, well, where can we really start? And so they started talking about things like, you know what, we celebrate all these other things. Can we celebrate academics more? And they're right. And those are things that we've actually talked about in the past, but just really haven't moved, I'd say at a pace that we need to move at. And so, you know, what was a quick fix was to kind of get everything, you know, get the honor roll up in the building. Yeah, we put something out through the media, but what about in our own space? And those were things that came in just from conversations with students and now a focus of making sure we do that. But now how do we do that at a higher level? So we want to focus on how we do that with regularity next year. And then the last thing that I'll talk about is the data talks. Again, while we've implemented those, I think, across the board in terms of each building and we focused on the core subject areas. And we want to extend that to all of our subjects. You know, we want to extend that to our music program, we want to extend that to our, you know, culinary programs. We want to extend that to our C T E programs, all those different kind of, what do you call it, specials, which I know they don't like, so I was trying to find another word. But student classes that are not necessarily the core academics. But now they get to come and talk about data, which may not be numeric, but data that's important and that we can still see student growth. So that's it. I'll take any questions?
Right, I'll start, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I just have a question. Sorry, kind of observation, maybe a multi-part question. I see here under Advanced Placement Prep, we went from 31,000 down to 15,000. I was just wondering if you can explain how we got to that number, if anyone can, really?
So part of it, part of it is is that, you know, we won't, in the future, we won't be paying for those exams. And what we found was, well, students that that do get free and reduced lunch, those will be paid for. But what we found in the past was that there were a lot of times where students would kind of take the course but not take the exam. We pay for them and they wouldn't necessarily take it. They take the grade. But then we pay for something where they didn't necessarily take the take the course. The other piece was, you know, just really looking at, you know, we used to provide all these different opportunities to provide outside, I would say, support and training where we might have, now we don't need that when we have as much, when we have more people that are already kind of trained in those areas. So that was an initial number I can say I saw years ago. So it was really just kind of looking at, you know, what we have and what we need and kind of forecasting. So those things cost a lot of money, to be honest with you. And now if we're going to pay for things, it's going to be for students that, you know, obviously we want all our students to try to take, you know, take opportunity to try things and and try harder, more challenging courses. But at the same time, you know, we we have a, I think, a responsibility to kind of shift those funds in other places where we can, you know, kind of support some other things.
You know, I agree, especially I like what you mentioned about the free and reduced lunch, the students who qualify for that, having the ability to have their classes paid for as well. And just looking down at the budget, you know, I'm looking at art, I'm looking at, from Windsor High, I'm looking at art, music, language arts, mathematics, science and social studies. And it looks like we're spending much more on the A P test than we're spending in any of those areas. So I think even now it's a little bit more in line with some of these things. And and those other services are things that really meet the needs of all of our kids as well instead of a smaller subgroup. But I am excited to hear that you guys are providing in a way for students who may not be able to afford. Because equity was going to be, equity was going to be a question for me as well. But it's nice to hear that you guys are tackling that. So E C E, the E C E courses you have to pay for as well? Yes. But you guys also will be able to provide for students with net income threshold? All right, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you very much. You know, class of 99, 25 years ago, I don't think I'm too old, so I'm not at the 50 range. But Windsor High. A couple of things. I I really like the engagement of of alums. I did come back and speak to students. I know, I know you said I'm too old to come back now. Yeah, class of 2013, he said was too old, so 99 is too old. So.
Oh, that would be the silver, the silver edition group.
Oh, you tried it.
Oh, I would be a part of it too.
You tried it.
I'd be right there with you.
You tried it, sir. One F T E. Exactly. My goodness.
Well played, sir.
You gonna need me on the S T C, but anyway, sir.
I know I'm gonna see you. I know I'm gonna have you.
But I I do like that and I'm glad that we've we've continued that tradition. But to your point, it has to be relevant. It has to, the the kiddos have to feel like they 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 have questions that are relevant, that that these young people that you're bringing back, oh, I remember that so-and-so. Or maybe that person graduated with my cousin, whatever the case may be. So I do understand, all jokes aside, why it needs to to feel relatable, right? Another thing, when we're thinking about, and this might be, it's you, but it's also Mr. Fulton. So I I feel like it's relevant, so I'll just bring it up. As a mother of a student athlete, have we thought about that pocket of time between school close, practice, school close, away game, game, whatever the case may be? Parents have come to me and asked about study hall. Can, is there possibility to bring that back? I know that's an old-school thing. Any thoughts around what that would mean fiscally?
Yeah, so absolutely, we've had those conversations. And again, as, you know, folks from way back when who actually benefited from from those things, it's definitely a conversation we've had. Right now, we focused on developing after-school programs, really, and it's for anyone. It's going to be a student athlete, it can just be, you know, a student that, you know, is just a student, where we've kind of focused on different after-school, so we have our homework club. We do have a smaller version of the homework club. And then we have specific subject areas where students can go and get support. However, we do know that how our different teams operate at different times and things like that, it will cost, you know, I would say, extra funds for those things to happen in terms of supervision. So we do, while we have a lot of awesome teachers that are coaches in the district, you know, many of our coaches are coming from other places. And so in those instances, what do you, what do you do? And, you know, if we can't have someone there, what is the kind of the alternative to do so? And we've kind of talked about what that looks like. I think we are at the point where we're going to get some feedback from, you know, different, obviously our faculty and maybe present and see what we have for opportunities to pay people to kind of stay and do the extra work. But, you know, at the time, we're also being mindful of what does that look like in terms of bringing people in or making sure we don't burn our other people that are already there out? You know, because I think a lot of our folks would step up and jump at the opportunity to do so if offered to be paid for it. But it's also an opportunity to kind of, we just really want to get a solid plan before we just go, here's study hall. And then that looks different, you know. So who is going to be in study hall? It can't just be a box where where, you know, we just got people hanging out. It needs to have a plan. We need to have people that can be monitoring what those assignments are. We need to have, you know, a way that we kind of get information back and forth from those teachers, what students should be working on, where they're struggling. So there's a lot of different pieces. We do offer, I think, a lot of resources during the day in terms of our labs and all those different pieces. But that doesn't help a student that has to be back at four, but can't get over, so we we get all of that.
Right, they don't drive.
Right.
Right? So it's just this this pocket of these younger, these freshmen, these sophomores that don't have a Grammy like my daughter has, because she's schlepping kids back and forth that don't drive yet. And because of sports, they didn't take the driver's license test and all the things. So I just that I'm always cognizant, especially, you know, when I'm, you know, headed up to the high school doing concession stands. I'm like, have you been here this entire time? Oh, my gosh, you know, that was, you know, and they haven't eaten and the and the whole thing. So I'm just thinking through how we can just, and and to your point of making sure that, you know, you know, the the checking of the grades is happening. I know that for a fact, which is wonderful. Hearing a lot of great feedback, parents don't know. We want them to have the power school, but not all parents have the power school, because right now I can go and check. But a lot of parents are not checking, so it's great that we're doing it. We're actually checking more than other districts are checking and getting out in front of it. So just to piggyback on that, just anything that we could do to just think about those those young people that are missing so much time, then having that long evening of game, practice, getting home very late and not have, you know, that time of actually getting the studies done. So I have to put it out there because I'm I'm being held accountable by my constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm really happy that the debate team is back in, back in office, I'll say it that way. And what I'd like to know is, did you fully fund for transportation for 24, 25?
Excuse, did we fully fund?
Fully fund, because they told me there was no money for transportation for the debate team.
No, so what I explained to them, because I did meet with them, is that it wasn't necessarily designated from last year to this year. And so what we talked about is, so now that's another opportunity where we might be able to move funds around to support things like that. So right now, we had only committed to doing like five, five, like four or five trips. And so we knew that money, we could, you know, kind of find that money to make sure, because the the huge expense is the bus. You're talking maybe 12, 12 students. But you're still paying eight, $900 for a bus. And so, you know, you start thinking about, if you look at our organization from top, you know, as a whole, you know, we want to give those students that experience. And this year, we kind of, you know, said we'll take it on and and make sure they get that experience. But yes, that's something that once we bring it back, we want to sustain it and then we'll have to look for other places. So like when you say, okay, we're not using that A P money here, maybe that's an opportunity to kind of shift it some or something else that, you know, we'll be monitoring and auditing.
Yeah, they were raising money over the weekend.
Yeah, they did. They did a good job, actually.
The previous weekend. I gave them some of my mad money.
Your mad money?
Oh, yes, women have mad money.
True.
Thank you.
Dr. Hill.
So I just want to address and make sure, and I want to make sure my leaders remember and understand. When we had the Esther funds, I said from day one that I am going to spend the money so that we have some hard assets. So you you shouldn't be paying for buses for a debate team, those little teams, because we have a number of vans that you can take and use. That's why we bought them. So all these little trips and little groups, this would not be, because that's not, well, that's cost prohibitive to put 12 people, 10 people on a bus, right? So I don't want you to forget that, because people, I know how schools work. We get caught up in what people are saying right away in the building. But that's why we gave people the opportunity to get that endorsement. And if you have folks who don't have it, then that's, you know, then we can look at using some of that money. So kids aren't raising money to to get a trip, I mean, to take a ride. I don't know what else they're doing with that money, like it's for, maybe their snacks or something that they want. But we have the transportation. Again, that's what I said, I'm going to keep saying, because I, Dale and I, when we took on this money three years ago, I planned this. This is not new to me. I've done this in another district. So that's why I said, you know, people all wanted bodies. And I said, I'm going to have hard assets for my district. So when this is over, it will help, it will still pay for itself. So the fact that we have a number of vans sitting right out here that folks with the proper endorsement can just come sign out and use, it saves us a ton of money. Just think about it, one bus, $900, $1,800, you know, so we can do this. So if the advisor doesn't have the endorsement, you know, initially they need to get someone who has the endorsement to drive. But then I would highly recommend that advisor get the endorsement.
That's and that's what, that's kind of what what ended up happening, so.
So would they have?
But we shouldn't pay for a bus. Hold on, we should be paying for a bus, $900, because they have an endorsement, because we have people who have endorsements. So find a person that has the endorsement and it's much cheaper to pay that person to just, you know, the hourly time to go drive versus a bus. Like, we just have to always be fiscally responsible and be more creative as we move forward.
All right, I'll recognize Mr. Fury and then Ms. Cantor.
Just because it's a related question to Dr. Hill, really. And maybe it also to Mr. Parker. What is the nature of having to get an endorsement? What kind of training do you have to have to get to an endorsement to drive a bus? I thought there was some kind of training. Obviously, it's not C D L, but I thought there was some kind of training.
So we, it's called a V endorsement. So last school, last school year, the year before, okay, they're blending together. I put out an email to all staff. I, you know, definitely hit the coaches the most and, you know, got lists from Erica Fangiulo and Chris Fulton of like, who are the people that have these teams or small pockets of groups that want to go places? Like, we got to get them certified. So the district paid for the V certification. We brought in someone to actually hold the class. It was over like a four or five-day class. They took the test, we paid for everything through Esther Funds, and now they're able to drive a 10-to-12-passenger van. So whenever you're carrying schoolchildren, you need to have that extra endorsement. If you were just bringing children to school or to let, say, from school to a a debate club meet and then back to school, you wouldn't need that endorsement. But the V endorsement allows those students to now go to the debate club and come back. But if for some reason those, the parents aren't there, we now are covered to now bring that child home directly. So it just gives us more ability. And if there's only five kids on the bus, just bring the five kids home. So, or van, excuse me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Cantor and then Mr. Peddles.
Thank you. Mr. Fury answered part of my, asked part of my question. So there, you have like a fleet of vans that they can use as long as they're certified. That's wonderful. And they just sign up, I guess, and if they're available? Right, that's what I saw when I came, when I've been coming here every week, every month.
Folks can use the vans. It's still like, you know, it's still a process getting the message out, because I know for years, folks would say, oh, we don't have any way to get around. And then they would say things like, well, let's see if we can borrow the van from the the Powell Center. I remember that happened and they would go down to 300 Windsor Ave. But no, these these are vehicles that we are entitled to.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for informing us. That's great. That's wonderful.
And just so you know too, so this is, I mean, so we actually started buying these vans, I believe, six or seven years ago, we bought two mainly for our C B T A program. Because we were spending thousands and thousands of dollars to get a bus to bring our our kids that need to go to the job site and then picking them back up. I mean, it it doesn't, it just getting that bus in drive position is hundreds of dollars.
Small fortune.
And that, we started very small. And then I know, I believe, Chris Fulton, like, they tap into the special ed teachers here at L P W, because they all have the V certification for a while and now they're used to it. So.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Peddles?
Oh, just same thing. But so how many vans do we have?
Is it five? Yeah, five.
Nine?
Five.
Oh, excuse me, five. Well, can we increase it enough to?
Yeah, I knew. I knew what the question was going to be. I could, but I was trying to.
You know where I'm going.
No, I don't know where you're going. What are you about to ask Mr. Peddles?
You know what he's going to ask, like, I know.
We can, we can go into business.
We could, but not as a school transportation company. Maybe special ed transportation, but.
Well, we do so much C T E. I mean, the high schools should be able to provide all you need here, right? Just put that on the C T E and we'll solve two problems there, let's say.
So if we're transporting students, we would need a lot of 12-passenger vehicles to transport, you know, 3,000 kids. So I I think, and then we would need the space, so it's not feasible. Just, it's a great idea, but it's not feasible. But I would like to, you know, continue to add vehicles to. You know, I wanted to get a bigger bus, but, you know, Ms. Bacho explained, we would have to find somebody with C D L to drive the bigger bus. So that is, again, something that doesn't work, because you're only going to have one or two people. And we've all experienced with the D A C O, folks can't get the C D L fast enough, they can't find the drivers. So I didn't want to be in that position. So the vans are just perfect. And again, I just want to say it to the public, the small things that we do, even the C B T A kids, like this morning, when I even the CBT kids, like this morning, when I pull in, typically they're headed off to all their jobs and the things that they do. So, but they're not doing anything with an evening. In after, you know, the afternoon, like they're done and then they're just sitting there. So we need to use those vans.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, it was more of a suggestion. I can't believe I didn't think of this yesterday during SGC. But Ms. Taylor, Vice President Taylor, kind of gave me the idea just now on as far as what WEF could provide as far as like the whole debate team situation. So the buses obviously are, we have the vehicles. But as far as hosting, if someone was to write a grant for that or try to propose an idea of hosting at Windsor, the same way we had the idea for the summit, that would be something that would probably be very exciting for WEF to receive on their end as far as a grant idea, so. Should have somebody look into that. Let's work.
Right. Do you have questions for the high school? Mr. Halleck, I'll recognize you, make sure that you, I know, I see Mr. Fury, but I just want to make sure, Mr. Halleck? Did you have any questions for the high school?
I. Uh, no questions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fury?
Yeah, can you flesh out a little bit more about the student, the monthly student summits? Does every student participate in a small group or is this a larger group? And do they sign up based on, are there different topics or the same topic that month for everybody?
So actually, yes, it's a really good question. No, some of those things where we've kind of engaged the entire student body, those happen a lot of times in connections. There's been other pieces where students or recommendations from teachers have allowed us the opportunity to do certain workshops. What we tried to do, and again, we talk in subgroups, but we were very, myself and Dr. Mallory and the SEL team were very intentional about, you know, we're going to get a group of black males. We're going to get a group of Hispanic females. We're going to get a group that may be struggling with attendance. We're going to get, so really just kind of looking at the data that led us to those, to those folks and bringing them into a forum that, you know, we can talk to them as adults and vice versa. So, you know, I think in connections, it's a great opportunity to, you know, kind of have our students lead some of that work along with some of our faculty. But this is a little more intimate in the sense that, you know, we actually start talking about action plans and things of that nature where they come back and then we kind of, you know, progress monitor from there.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought up profile of a graduate because I think it does go hand in hand with the building thinking classroom, some of the same things that Ms. Mayne talked about regarding collaboration and communication. And, you know, all the other creative thinking, problem solving, all those things that we were working on before COVID. We had gotten fairly far along before COVID hit. But all those skills, you know, I, I think are important. And I know we, for a while back then, we were talking about, do we grade those things versus grading just the academics? And making decisions though, how do we integrate those in everything that we do? So I'm glad to hear about the building thinking classrooms, which kind of goes hand in hand with that. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does that satisfy question eight of Mr. Panos's packet? Please explain what student summits are.
Well, I guess so. Could use some more fleshing out, but I think we've had enough.
All right. So we can determine question eight has been discussed and resolved? All right. Mr. Panos?
Ms. Mayne, the, on this BTC, is, when does the teacher then, or maybe it's, maybe it's a more general question, the new material that you introduced, when does that introduce it? How is it, how did, I mean, is that also student led too? Or what is the?
It's a combination, like students are not intended to be standing at the boards for 88 minutes of the class. There is a combination of explicit teaching that happens, like maybe students, it's not going to be the same like recipe every time you go into a class either. So maybe students are exploring something at the boards, getting their like feet wet into a new concept, trying to figure something out. And then the teacher, it's called consolidating the work that's being done. So the teacher consolidates the work that the students did, leading into like the, the direct instruction, explicit teaching of like, okay, you, you, let's say we're taking a problem about like a break even problem where you're trying to figure out what's the best deal. So you have students do it, they figure out, somebody uses a table, somebody uses an equation, some people guess and check, some people aren't sure what to do, they just like check one answer. But they all kind of start off with a problem, but then the teacher brings it back together where they refer back to the boards, but they're able to give notes and examples to the whole class. And then maybe they go back to the boards again to practice, it's called thin slicing. They practice one problem at a time. Or maybe they stay in their, in their seats and they do their checking or understanding. So it's not, it's not students at the boards doing the work for the entire time. There are definitely, like you will see students sitting and the teacher talking and going over some examples.
Well, I was, yeah, I can, I can understand there to be a back and forth once you have problems. But if, if a topic is new, I assume at that time, the teacher then is in a more traditional kind of role or.
Yeah, I mean, there's still things that the kids can explore at the boards. It's really all about how you set up the task. So you're, you're kind of priming them for the new learning. Maybe they're doing a warm up at the board that's recalling some previous information. They're adding on to it in preparation for the new learning.
Okay.
Or it's scaffolded enough at the boards that the kids are discovering the new learning. And then after that, they're coming back together as a class and then solidifying it with their notes.
Okay.
But we do invite you to come in and watch.
Thank you. I will.
Any other questions from the board?
The, can I ask?
Mr. Panos?
Yeah, I didn't understand the advanced placement prep being reduced from, you know, 31K to 15K. I didn't quite understand the connection the answer gave me. Could you, I wonder if you couldn't go over that again? It's a, the, the, advanced placement prep, as I understood it, was something that was a carryover from, I don't know, the Bill Gates Foundation came in and they had special preparation for, for kids, you know, who needed help or something. That's what I understood it to be. Is it something else? What is being reduced?
To be honest with you, the bulk of that expense was paying for the exams.
The what?
Paying for the exams.
Oh, oh, so, so prep means that paying for the exam?
No.
I, I, is it something else? Or is it something else here is under Windsor page?
So I believe this question was just answered, I believe.
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay.
So I believe you're seeking clarity.
Okay, you need clarity, okay, I got it.
He's seeking clarity, it was already answered. I believe he's seeking clarity.
Yeah.
Let's provide him that clarity.
So the prep piece goes back a couple of years where we, where we had students that would be, or teachers that would actually be, have extra time.
Do a Saturday or something like this.
Right, and so with the extent that we don't have as many, you know, forecast,
You haven't been doing it for a while?
Taking that, excuse me?
You have not been doing that for a while?
No, they're, they're still doing it, but we don't anticipate having to use it at that level because now we're going to be more.
Okay, so you're going to reduce the number.
So now students are going to have to commit to that number if they're going to pay for it. And so we anticipate that we won't be paying for as many because as many of those students wouldn't necessarily be taking the test. So while we may still need to, you know, pay for a teacher to give, you know, preparatory, you know, to, to, to students on a given Saturday, we don't have to do it at the same rate that we've done in the past. Along with not having to pay for them.
You see, originally when this was put in, yes, by Dr. Silverman, 25 years ago. The deal was, what was happening at the time was that students were taking the course but not taking the test. And, and so he said, look, we'll pay for the, pay for the test. You must take the test though, regardless. So are we still requiring the taking of the test regardless of who's paying for it?
Yes.
So, so a student commits to the, to the, to the course, he's guaranteed, it's guaranteed, it's understood that he's going to take the AP test, test. Is that correct? Okay.
That's what I.
I got it, thank you.
All right, I think we've obtained clarity. We all sent to high school? Do you have any wish lists, Mr. Parker?
Oh, boy. Say yes.
You say what? Do I have wish lists?
Save you $1 million.
Well, I, I, I talked about the, the area in the, the red town. That's a, that's a wishing a goal. Again, I really think it's an opportunity for us to invite people back to see. And I'm not just talking about, we have people that have gone off into different careers and things like that, that we could celebrate. But, you know, if I, if I, you know, I'd be remiss, we look at this year, you know, we, we had a challenge in terms of, all right, this is the first time we've, we've had, you know, 11, 12 people out on medical leave, maternity leave and things like that. While I think we're, I'm going to beat you to it, we're fully funded. And I think we, you know, in a given year, we don't have the challenges of all those people being out at once. I think, you know, we, we have the staff in terms of our educators and enough educators to be in front of, in front of students. Probably a utopian wishlist piece would be something where, you know, we, we provide opportunities to have some, some more support staff that not only maybe support during the day, but then also like some of those after school pieces that, that we might look for. That would, that would be the only piece that I would say. But again, talking to a latchkey child that I think is you repurpose and you do, you can pretty much accomplish whatever you need to. Because there's no guarantee with whatever you get that you're necessarily going to get success from. It's really how, you know, the people that are there in that space put their minds together and carry out the mission, so to speak.
I always ask that. We have a lot of talented students at Windsor High School. We have a lot of athletic students at the high school. I hate the term student athlete because they're student first. They just happen to be athletic. So I always say athletic student. Just want to make sure that they're all getting what they need, extra enrichment outside of the classroom and representing Windsor well and being able to do the things that they do. We got a lot of good programs at the high school. And I just want to make sure everyone has a fair opportunity to participate and that we have enough funding to actually drive that participation. So that's why I asked the question. If you feel you're good, then you are good. Thank you very much. So next, it's going to be just for the group as we're here. We have CTE. And then we still have to do just, I believe, the introductory pages where we have to be handed out two pages that was not with the book, correct?
So it's only one page, but like last year, so our magnet school tuition has not been fully, has not all come in yet. And one of the admin assistants are challenging some of the costs.
Okay.
So I'll have it for you next round.
Okay.
And that answers the questions of the magnet school increase also.
All right. And where are we at it? That satisfies question number nine on Mr. Panos's packet as well. All right, next is CTE.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Erica Fangiulo, Assistant Principal Windsor High School. I'm going to try to be brief since we've had lots of discussions. So I will do my best. I could sit up here and talk about CTE forever. We've heard a lot of things, but I'll just go over some of our highlights and the work that we're going to highlight so far from this year and the work that we're going to do for next year. So one of our major highlights that we have done this year is we have, well, first of all, we have a full staff and we have had all of our staff members come back. So I didn't quite write that on there, but that's the first time in a while. So we have staff that are like truly committed to our department and they are growing their programs, owning their programs. And just by having, like year after year, the kids are really enjoying everything that they're learning. And it's been like really great to be in there and having them learn new things and starting to take those level twos and threes that have been missing for a while. We have obtained a chapter license for Habitat for Humanity this year. So that's really great. So we're going to have kids start, starting to go out once that spring and it gets a little warm to start contributing to Habitat for Humanity. So Windsor High School actually has a chapter license right now. So we've started that club, Eric Eisner has started that club and it's been pretty successful so far. Our culinary is continuing their participation in that NASA Haunch program. I believe we have two teams right now that have qualified. Their recipes have been chosen and have qualified. And that's coming up in February, the competition. So we usually do very well in that. And it's marketable and that's something that we've been very successful at in the future. I know we've heard we have secured a state grant through, for ECE through CCSU. So we are expanding to two programs in manufacturing and engineering through CCSU. So we're going to be able to offer credit through our department. And this year is, we're developing the curriculum for those in conjunction with CCSU. And then next year, the kids will be able to take two courses, a course in manufacturing and a course in engineering and earn that CCSU credit. So this is new, we got a grant from the state through Christina Morales, secured that. So we're working in partnership with that. And Bonnie and Dana Fudge and myself, we've had many meetings and we're still in the process of securing all of those funds. Well, we have the funds, it's just kind of working out the details. We are one of the first people to be working with CCSU. So if this goes well in, you know, my auditing of the curriculum, we have a lot of other courses that we can expand to when this partnership goes well, including things in our arts and graphics department, which is something that we don't currently have. And we are continuing to strengthen our community partnerships through the Chamber of Commerce. We've had a lot of visits to manufacturing plants in town. And we've had, Eric Eisner, one of our teachers, has been invited to speak at the Chamber of Commerce and has done so at the town hall meetings three times this year and three separates, three separate events that he's been asked to do and kind of promoting our department and the growth that we're doing with the kids and, and whatnot. So that's been kind of good exposure for us. Major work that we're going to continue to do for next year to promote and increase our enrollment in our CCP and our ECE programs. Our CCP is our work through Capital Community College with our level twos. We have that a lot in our business department. And as you know, with our financial literacy requirements and us only having two business teachers, our level twos have kind of had to take a step back in the last couple of years. So now that we've kind of established in the, in the last two years, we, more kids are going to have an opportunity to take some more of those electives and those level twos. So hoping to boost that up a little bit more. Strengthen our pathways with increased enrollments in two or more classes. We've been doing a good job with Dr. Haiti to kind of continue that work and further develop, the further development of updated curriculum. We heard from Ms. Jorgensen about the new state standards that are coming out. So I don't want to say we're on hold because we have two, three department members who have been an active part of the development of those state standards and have been going to workshops to help develop them. So we're kind of on the cutting edge, but it's kind of nice to have that. So those are where our major work is. So with that, anything else, Dr. Haiti? Does that sound good? Questions?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Fury?
Thank you. Great to hear about moving forward with CCSU. And thanks so much for, Dr. Haiti, for pushing that and getting that for us. It's especially when you hear we're one of the few who've done that. I remember going to CCSU last year and seeing their new robotics and mechatronics lab and it just blows you away.
Yeah.
And then watching students who are in there, what they're able to do. And I know we've gone, several faculty have gone to some of the businesses, manufacturing companies here. Are there plans to try to get some internships or job shadowings for maybe seniors? I mean, some of it, you may not be able to work on equipment unless you've been qualified or ready at Windsor High School.
So we currently, right now, as you know, we are in our second year of our, of our manufacturing teacher, which is Eric Eisner, who is doing manufacturing and the wood tech right now. So we didn't have a consistent person or somebody that, for a while. So with that being said, we have a lot of amazing equipment in there. And a lot of times when people, when manufacturing companies come in, they're very like, wow, look at this great stuff. So they are still in the process of, Eric is still in, and the other CTE, who were getting other people trained in it as well, are still in the process of learning how to use some of that equipment. And they now are almost, at the tail end of that, so to say. So this year. So this year, um, Eric has really had full manufacturing classes, but he's, right now, he's only had, he only had one section of manufacturing one this year, one section of manufacturing one, or first semester, he has one this semester too. Last year in his first year, he had a section of manufacturing two, but he didn't teach the one. The kids didn't know as much. It was a different teacher, it was COVID. They didn't get to work on machines because it was COVID. So there was a lot of, so he's still growing. So next year, we're gonna have a cohort of like forty kids who have gone through one, so hopefully we'll get to two. So next year, probably that won't be the, the case just because we're still growing the program and we don't have the kids ready. But that is 100% the plan in the future and Eric has been working towards getting, he has made tons of connections in town. And there's so many people that want us, like, we want to give the kids, but we just don't have the kids yet. But we are, that's the pathway right now.
Thank you, I'm, uh, very excited about that.
Yeah, we are, we are too. We just need to get the kid, like, get the, get the kids in there, like, there's lots of.
Because realistically, you know, the state of Connecticut has a manufacturer, chief manufacturing officer, of the few states that does. And we need to be able to have, again, as Mr. Madison alluded, these are high paying jobs. Many that you don't need a college education for. You may have a pathway where you can say, to, to go a little step further, here's where you may go to S. Nuntuck or some other school to get that. And then it may even lead, you may say after this, well, maybe I, I don't want to be a machinist, maybe, you know, an automated machinist. Maybe I want to be an engineer. And so one thing can lead to another and many of the companies that are here, Pratt EB, if they don't have other, other skilled set people, they will move to other, other districts. So it's a need, plus it's a good paying job. But I, my, part of the question I had initially was getting the actual experience, going in someplace, whether it's shadowing or an internship of some type, so.
And we have tons of invitations for, um, our students to go to various, like, whether it's sites or workshops or stuff, it comes through, um, Dr. Haiti's office. Um, Bonnie Feynman gets them a lot. I get, I'm on a bunch of listservs and every time it's something that kind of fits in, it would fit in our school day. It's not, uh, you know, it, it would be appropriate for our kids, that we always take kids there, always. And, um, I know, like, my son did take, was in one of the manufacturing, he actually made some, I was like, you made this? I thought, there was actually like a screw piece, I thought that it was like already made. He's like, no, I made, made that. And I was like, oh, okay. So he actually did. But, um, they, he's gone to a couple of field trips just, just this year, just, they've been invited and, and whatnot and it's kind of opened his eyes to a lot of opportunities. And just that exposure itself has been really beneficial to the program.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Let me just, uh. Mr. Panelson, may I ask, uh, what kind of engineering? Uh, you have manufacturing, uh, engineering, but you said engineering, you referring, what do you mean?
They have a, our, we have an engineering one and an engineering course in the program of studies right now and it's, it's all computer based. It's.
It's like CAD?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's what you mean by engineering, okay, thank you. And level two is just means the second.
The second level, yeah, it has math requirement.
Manufacturing two or something like that, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I know there's a large demand for manufacturing and engineering and you're just not, they're not getting the people in all of those two areas. And I know they will move out if they don't get what they need, so thank you.
No.
Mr. Madison?
Couple of questions, um, just, I'm a beginner here, right? How many years have we had a program of this magnitude with this kind of work? Like, there's, I see like ten staff. Has this been around forever? I know we've pushed it in the last year.
Yes, and we actually are down from what we used to be too, so. Since I've been in the district for many years. Um, but, um, since in, in my tenure here, we, we have, we, it's fluctuated, but, um, we're, we've been in a pretty stable spot, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just curious, because I know there was a little bit of a push last, uh, last season. Um, yeah, and I went to a technical high school, I was an auto mechanic before I went to college and I went to college at CCSU, so.
Come to our, come visit our auto shop. We just got a great new guy and it takes, it's hard to find a good teacher, so he's like doing a nice, nice little job in there.
That's awesome. And then do we have any, uh, metrics on, like, do people stay in these fields? Like longevity studies, like after they get out of high school?
So that, that, we've had a lot of turnover in the past, like five years with staff because we had, we had like a core who stayed in it for a while and then we had turnover and it's hard, even like we know where we might, you know, when you have a teacher, everybody's reaching out to the programs and saying, hey, we're gonna have a teacher and you want to try to get him, get him first. So that's, that is a, a good question. We don't have any metrics now, but it's definitely something that we, that I would love to start keeping stats on, that's.
But I'm asking more about the students than the staff.
So that would be maybe a counseling, a counseling question.
Yeah, if, if kids go through high school and they go into these, these, the engineering work, do they stay in engineering five, 10 years out? Do we have any information on that kind of thing?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
No, no.
I don't think we don't, okay, so no.
Very good, thank you. That's cool.
All right, any other discussion? I'm hearing none. All right, thank you. So I, we have two, two things we can do. We can take the A.D. since he's, since he's here and, and do part of what's next week for the athletic director. Uh, are you open, is the group open to that? All right, is he, um, Dr. Hill, is he prepared to go?
All right, and, um, come on down. So when somebody gets hurt, you know, they go to the, they say the next man up, right? So you gotta be prepared always. So, um, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Uh, my name is Chris Fulton, I humbly serve as the Athletic Director of Windsor Public Schools. Um, thank you for having me here this evening. A lot of highlights to share, um, some of the things that have already been talked about. One of the things we're really proud of is the academic monitoring system, which is, you know, what we've been doing for the last four years. And with that, we've seen an increase or a decrease in the number of Fs that our athletes are getting and an increase in the amount of, um, all academic awards. So last year, we had 283 CCC all academic awards, um, which I can, we can attribute to that. So we celebrate that at our, uh, at all of our end of the year, um, arrangements. We have multiple teams make the CIAC playoffs. Um, some of the ones that we were really proud of was the boys volleyball team, we've been talking about that. Some of our non-traditionals, um, wrestling, had a great year last year and having another, you know, stupendous year right now. And so, uh, we're, we're definitely looking at some of the things that we put in place as, uh, as a way, as a part of why, reasons for why we're doing that. We have diligence training that we're working with, they're doing a lot of, you know, really great work with our kids, getting them in strength and conditioning, getting them in shape. And so, um, attribute some of our non-traditionals, which is our volleyball, even our boys, our girls volleyball. We see, right now, they're in there training with diligence. So we see a lot of improvement in not only our, uh, our records, but just the, the visual, just the, you're looking at their strength and their conditioning and their bodies. And so that we're looking really good at that. Lot of postseason accolades last year, or we had some division championships in track and field, softball. So a lot of our kids are doing some really great things. Um, girls flag football was a big tremendous thing for us, we instituted here and, um, we, we, in the CCC, as you may know, I, uh, we are a member of the CCC. And so I took upon ourselves to create some opportunities for our young ladies. Um, we were able to, you know, ho- host a tournament. Tournament had 12 CCC teams. From those 12 CCC teams, uh, you know, we didn't win, but I was a little disappointed, disappointed that we were able to win it on our home field, but Glastonbury did win, but we were able to, you know, give our girls an experience that they hadn't had in the past. We collaborated with the New York Giants and alumni Jason Pennock, um, who came down and helped, you know, secure, um, some funding for us in terms of equipment. And our kids were able to go down to, you know, to see the Giants during preseason camp, so that was a great, a great thing for our kids. Um, also working, we also have a young lady who's, who signed to go to, uh, the University of Rhode Island, my alma mater, go roadie. And, um, named Ayana Franks, who was up for Gatorade Player of the Year this year, as well as McDonald's All-American. So, um, we're, we're hoping that she gets some of those accolades. So those are some of the things that we've been working on. Um, obviously, um, some of the big work that we want to continue to work on is our academics, uh, the health and safety of our kids, um, our students. So we want to, uh, we, we in the process of procuring an athletic trainer. This year has been really tough for us in that way. There's been a, um, a drastic decline in the amount of athletic trainers available to not only Windsor High School, but across the nation. Um, and so we're in the process of securing that. We've been working with Yukon, um, they're showing us that we'll have one for, we thought we had one for January that didn't fail through, but we'll definitely have one for the, the upcoming season. Um, right now, we're, we're doing like some more pro bono things, where we're just bringing in, uh, people on a daily basis. So we're always covered. And lastly, um, big goals, securing, uh, a field hockey, some field hockey, um, at the middle school. Been working with, you know, uh, Ms. Jorgensen, Principal Jorgensen, um, trying to, you know, look at those non-traditionals again. We're always strong in football, we're always strong in basketball, we're always strong in track and baseball and softball are pretty strong. But we're looking at some of our non-traditionals and bringing them up as well. And so, um, we're working with that. And last but not least, um, we have an off-season plan that, um, the CIAC is putting out where coaches can work directly with kids, um, on, on sport-specific, um, initiatives. And so we're putting a plan together for this summer to make sure that all our bases are covered in terms of our medical and, um, our supervision.
All right, any questions for the Athletic Director? Mr. Fury, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Panelson, in order.
Uh, do we currently have this, this year now, um, any students, uh, playing ice hockey in a co-op?
We do.
We do? How many students?
We have three.
Three, okay, thank you.
Come to the game on, on Saturday, that will be, uh, Avon Old Farm, three o'clock.
Okay, sounds good. A great game the other night against Northwest Catholic, by the way. Uh, baseball, we won a baseball championship a year and a half ago. Is the banner coming back soon?
Yes. I just asked, I just.
One last thing I have to ask you, Dr. Hill, in our, our, our regular monthly meetings.
Yes, yes, it'll be back soon.
Ms. Taylor?
Uh, thank you for bringing up the athletic trainer situation, because it is, uh, you know, a situation across. Um, but, right, that's an opportunity for our students to, to know that. You know, when we're talking about CTE, when we're talking about athletic trainers, when we're talking about the lack of educators, when we're talking about the, where, where we're thinking, uh, will be some gaps in the future. Um, I, this isn't just for you, this is for all the educators in the room. When we're thinking about building pipelines, these, these are the type of things that we want to talk about. When we're thinking about curricula, we want to think about these pipelines to, uh, working, the world of work. Uh, it's expensive out here, right? And we need to think, um, more thoughtfully about how it all affects, uh, our, our kids. And I'm thinking about the athletic trainer because, you know, kids get hurt. My daughter got hurt, we did have somebody temporarily, if something goes wrong, something goes left. We were at New Britain and for whatever reason, our trainer was there, thank goodness, because it was, uh, you know, a situation with one of the girls' eyes and, and carrying on. And, and this is honestly, you know, it could be a life and death situation. So I just, you know, plead to the greater community, if you know someone, we really need someone and it's a situation where we're down, you run back and forth, right? I mean, we've got things going on at, you know, in the gym and there's stuff going on at, on the field. And that's scary, we've been there, right? So I just want to put that out there into the atmosphere, we need athletic trainers, we, we really need athletic trainers. Um, a lot of people have asked about the mandatory shot clock. Oh, where did that happen? Who paid for that? I, I, I want, we can see it here, but can you say out loud that we had to buy them? This is what we had to.
So it's mandatory, yes. So I, it was a mandatory shot clock from the CIAC, every school had to get it, we paid for it.
Exactly, thank you very much. And I love it, because that means you can't hold the ball and, you know, and all that stuff, so. It does, indeed. And thank you for all that you do. Again, um, the academic piece, I love that, I think it's really great. And it's awesome to see that, um, we had a, a student go off to school for volleyball and we didn't actually have like an actual team, so that was really amazing. Um, Peyton?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. And shout out to Ayana Franks. She is outstanding. If you haven't come to see the girls', uh, basketball play, please, please come see them, thank you.
Mr. Panelson and then Ms. Cantor.
Thank you. Um, so the, the big items increases are contracted services. I assume that that's what you're talking about, the trainer, the training situation, that's 18% increase, you know? As, as, actually, is that a cost per trainer or number of trainers or what?
So in the past, we've had an organization, um, that, um, that we paid and they would supply us with the one athletic trainer. Right now, we have an organization that's providing us with several or, you know, one or various one each, each, every day. So, yeah.
I see, okay. The, the other one is of course transportation. Is that number of buses or is that just, that can't, that, that's, the transportation cost increased, uh, 18%? What, what does that mainly do?
It supplies the away transportation to all the sporting events.
Sure, I understand, but it increased 18%. What is the reason for the increase?
The cost of buses have increased and we have been in the negative in this line item for the past couple of years. So it was, we haven't gotten funded, fully funded to the amount of games that we actually go out and play.
Okay, this again is Datsun, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Can't use his vans?
We could, we do for smaller, I know the golf team loves them.
Golf would use the vans, but, you know, you can't put a football team on the van.
Thank you, thank you very much, this is excellent.
Ms. Cantor? And then Mr. Williston.
Thank you, um, I just have a request, um, on awards night, if you could please try not to hold it on a Board of Education night. That would be wonderful, thank you.
Got that already, I got that already for several people, so yes, I'll do what I can.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Williston?
Yeah, I was gonna, um, I was just wondering what is the schedule for, uh, replacing jerseys or like athletic gear for students?
Yes, good news. Um, so we have a four-year cycle, so every four years, um, a group of teams would get new jerseys.
Okay, I was only wondering because I did hear some complaints through the grapevine from the tennis team. I'm not sure how like, how recently theirs have been changed, whether it's been.
Twenty twenty-one.
Or, and you said what?
Every four years, they got them in 2021.
Okay, all right, so their year is coming up soon.
2025, yes.
Okay. All right, I was just, I had to bring the concern, that's all, just had to bring the concern.
Yes.
Do, do we have, do we have an adequate number of AED machines strategically placed across the whole campus?
So, uh, Ms. Batchell and I had a conversation and I think Chuck Waterford was here at the time. And so we do have one inside the, um, the field house. We have two inside the building, one on the first floor outside of my office, I got where the library is and one outside the nurse's office, and then we have the portable one. So I think during this time, during this time, uh, the portable one is used in the gym. And so, and when we go outside, the portable one will go outside with the trainer.
So whenever there's a trainer, the trainer's gonna have an AED. Is that the understanding?
Yes, they have an AED on the back of the gator.
So the trainer wasn't there that day, but now we added it to the actual field house. We did not have that.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't bringing up any situation, I just want to make sure. Quite frankly, we have more than enough. I don't want us to be stretched then and from a geographical standpoint. And I want to make sure we have a unit that goes with our teams that go to away games, because we don't know what capacity they have a, as far as providing any support. I think I brought this up last year. We have to take care of our own kids, even if we're visiting someone, to make sure that we're providing that level of service. We can expect they're gonna give that level of service, just like a team should fairly expect that if they come to our, to our house, we're gonna take care of our kids and their kids. So I just want to make sure we have enough where we're not racing a hundred yards to get a unit and then race him back when, when, when time is ticking, so.
So presently, that, that wouldn't, if you were, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying you want to want to go with every team? So presently, we don't have that.
And we would need.
I, I know, I know that was told to me, that we don't have it. But I'm personally, as one board member, would love to have more than enough so that wherever we go, if we need one, we have one readily available. I don't want us to ever be caught again or anytime where we need a unit and we don't have one. So if there's, that's an assessment that needs to be made by you as the Athletic Director and come back to us and we, we need to provide those, that's something I personally would like to hear.
So Mr. Fulton and I had many conversations about this, um, and we're looking up to around 50 to 60.
50 to 60 of them if we, because what happens is you have to have every single away game, every single home game, but then you have all of our practices where our students are on multiple different fields between the high and middle and then at um, the park. So at any given time, we would need at least 20 to 30 a day.
So.
So it just, we can get those numbers for you, but I just, because through talking through that, it, because then what team doesn't get it? And so if we're doing it, we're doing it for all.
This might be a phase in project, but what I don't want is that we have too little and we need it and we don't have it. So that's my only concern. So if it's a, if it's a three to five-year plan where we ramp up to that number, so be it. But I would love for us to try to get there if we possibly can.
Understood.
Every single one of our souls, I believe, deserve that. So I will continue to push for that. And if it drives up the budget for us to get that, so be it. I have no problem with adding that on without taking anything off. And I'm just one vote. So that's just how I feel on the topic. All I got. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
So I believe we have satisfied everything on our docket for tonight. If there's any questions that need to be had on, yes, sir?
I have a question, like a request?
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll go for it. What, so we've, I know we have to get the introductory pages and we know we're owed one page because we're trying to get data. If there's any questions about the introductory pages, I will, I will deal with that first at the next meeting. And then from there, we will, if there's any question packets, and I ask that if you get packets to the staff, please give them a reasonable amount of time to be able to be prepared for the meeting. So if we can do that within 24 hours, that is the ask. If you can't get it within 24 hours, please give me a call and explain to me why we can't do it. And then I will apologize to Dr. Hill and ask him to put a rush on it. But I want to make sure that all of our questions are answered in, in a fair amount of time. Is there anything from this meeting that has not been discussed that needs to be pushed to next meeting? Mr. Halleck, I'm looking for you as well. Is there anything?
Uh, no.
All right, so I'm going to consider the rubric for this meeting complete, minus any, you know, odd questions we have for introductory pages. And when we come, we will start with number three, which is continuing education. All right, if that's so, I'll entertain a motion to adj, um, sorry, Mr. Mr. Wilson?
I was just wondering. Are we doing food services?
So those, I'm sorry, can I speak?
That's okay.
So food service and treehouse and the grants are all appendices. So they're not, those were all, those were added sites through the years. So we've usually talked about them at the end, but if you want me to bring in my food service director.
Yeah, it's just a small, I just wanted, I don't know if it's, it would just be to us, but like, if we see like what qualifies a student to be on.
Oh, sure.
So that can be a question. What qualifies a student to be on free and or reduced lunch? All right, that's a question for the next pack. No, that'd be, that'd be a sheet, a pink sheet for the next, for the next meeting. Any other questions? I hear none. Um, there's no announcements. I want to say the motion to adjourn.
So move, move to adj.
Wait a minute, the motions made by Mr. Williston is their second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williston, second by Mr. Pedals. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All appalled the same? Abstentions? Meeting's adjourned at 9:01. Have a good evening. Safe passage.
She said thank you.